Okay, welcome to the Historic Preservation Commission's special meeting. It's Thursday, December 7th, 2017, and the time is 5:15. Will you please have roll call?
Commissioner Cragnotti?
Here.
Commissioner Doom?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Shire?
Here.
Commissioner Vertanian?
Here.
Thank you, all present.
Okay, the report of the posting of the agenda was done on or before Monday, December 4th, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall. Item number three is the approval of the minutes from October 19th, 2017. Do we have any comments or revisions for those, from anybody? I have none.
None.
None? I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
You.
Roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Vertanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cragnotti?
Yes.
Commissioner Doom?
Yes.
Madam Chair Shire? Yes. Thank you, all five, yes, approve the minutes.
Okay, number four is oral communications, and we do have one speaker card, but first I want to say we're going to be rearranging the agenda slightly. We're going to be taking new business before old business, so after 5:00, we would jump to item 7, and then go back to 6:00. But with that, I'd like to call Steve Hunt.
Hi, good evening. I'm with the Glendale Historical Society, and I'm more here to talk about an event coming up, the candlelight tours at the, you talk about historic preservation, the doctor's house up there, the old Victorian house, and we get it all dolled up this time of year, and she's beautiful, so I'll leave these with you, and I encourage all of you to come. It's this Saturday from 6:30 to 8:30, and a week from this Saturday from 6:30 to 8:30. And it's very nice, and we have the gazebo set up with hot apple cider and things like that, lots of cookies, a little group playing music, and your self-guided tour. Just a suggestion, if you want some of the cookies, get there early, because I'll be there also.
Where can people get tickets, Steve?
You just show up at the house. It's, we ask for donations, we can't charge admission, but we do ask for a $10 donation for that. And it's a self-guided, and a lot of work going on today and tomorrow decorating the house.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go to item number five, which is comments from commissioners. Does anyone have any?
Just really quick, I know we have a long agenda, I just want to say, I know that there's been discussion lately with planning, yesterday there was a meeting about the accessory dwelling unit law that went into place from the state of California, in my opinion, a bit of an overreaching law passing that they passed at the beginning of the year. From a historic standpoint, I think it's important that City Council really consider not increasing the Florida area ratio in our neighborhoods. That's going to be kind of the number-one thing that could really impact the integrity of our historic neighborhoods. I know there's talk about regulating ADUs in historic districts, that's great, but I think across the city overall, it's important for the council to consider not increasing the Florida area ratio in all the neighborhoods. So, that's all, thank you.
I'd just like to thank the Glendale Historical Society for their tour of the Dyma District. It was a lot of fun, and I would also like to adjourn today in honor of those who lost their lives 76 years ago at Pearl Harbor, all those Glendaleians who lost during the war also, so if we could adjourn in their memory, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'd also just like to say thank you to the firemen and emergency response team that are, you know, up to almost 2,000 people fighting the fires here in LA and Ventura County, and, you know, they're trying to protect people's homes from losing everything, and here we have the luxury of determining historic resources or not, so just keep that in perspective, and obviously, we, I pray that the winds stop and that they're successful these next few days putting the fires out. With that, we'll go to number seven, new business. So 7A, we have a proposed South Cumberland Historic District, and this is the review of the petition requesting that City Council conduct a historic resources survey.
Okay, this will be the first of two relatively repetitive items, so I'll talk about the petition, just for people who aren't familiar with it. In our historic district designation process, one of the key steps in the early parts of the journey is to go around, for the proponents to go around the neighborhood, asking if people are interested in supporting the idea of the city conducting the survey to see if indeed there is a historic district. At this point, we only have the Historic Preservation Commission and staff's opinion that it looks like there might be a district, and it's only after we have the survey completed and approved by HPC that we have the idea that this does look like a district. The first survey is basically proponents going door-to-door, asking, "Do you support the survey?", not, "If you support the historic district?", and the threshold that we have to meet for this, for both of these districts that are going forward now, is 25% of the properties. And it's important to remember that this is the number of properties rather than the number of signatures on the petition, and each owner of any property needs to sign the petition for it to count. So I'll talk more about the specifics of that in a second, but we can talk about both of these districts. The first that was proposed is the first that we'll look at, is the South Cumberland Heights Historic District that's been proposed. This will kind of fill in the originally identified district of Cumberland Heights back in 2004, which now contains two districts, Ardeven Highlands and North Cumberland Heights, so South Cumberland Heights will fill that in, and in addition, the proponents and some of the neighbors have identified seven additional properties that they want to have considered as part of the survey. So if this is approved tonight, and we move forward and get funding from City Council for the survey, we'll be doing a survey update for the properties that have already been surveyed, and then we'll be doing new surveys for these seven additional properties. The process after tonight, if this moves forward, is that we have to go to City Council to ask that an RFP be issued, a request for proposals, then we send that out to all of the qualified surveyors, consulting firms in the area. We get whoever wants to bid on it comes back, we review the bids, we look at the prices, then we go back to City Council asking for the funds for that, and then we actually have the survey start going. So this is the kind of the long stretch for the survey, and we can't exactly predict how long that'll take. So, starting with South Cumberland Heights, the surveys are back, there are 209 properties proposed, including those seven additional. 92 properties have signed the petition. That brings us to 44% of the properties in the proposed district, which is a great number, and it's well over the 25% minimum. We do need a vote from the commission for both of these items to kind of authorize that we go forward with the process to conduct the survey. And so the public knows the petitions are not private, they're available for review if anyone wanted to look at them, but we also don't publicize them and put them out on the Internet or anything, because people are concerned about privacy issues and having signatures available. The commissioners have had a chance to review the petitions, and then what we do at staff level is review them to make sure that the ownership records are simpatico with the actual signatures on the petition. What this means ultimately is that we have property transactions that haven't been recorded by the assessor yet, sometimes people have died, and only one partner in a spouse relationship is still in the house, and so what we ultimately do is go back to the proponents and say, "Hey, we verified, we verified 92 of your petitions." In the case of South Cumberland Heights, I think we had 11 additional properties on the list that we can't quite verify. It's not that important, because they're so far over the threshold, but it does indicate that there's even greater support in the neighborhood than it appears from this number. Same is true for Casa Verdugo, which will be the second item you'll hear. So right now, we just need a vote on whether you want to move forward.
There's some speaker cards, so we should do those first?
Oh, of course, of course.
All right, we'll open the public hearing, we have some speakers on this determined item. First is Mark Terabarelli.
Mark Terabarelli, Kenneth Road, part of the South Cumberland Heights. Just wanted to come and say, as one of the door-knockers and letter-writers, and in support of all the people that were behind us also, I hope you reward us with moving on to the next stage. It's been a lot of fun, and I look forward to driving some more through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Derek Catra?
Catow.
Oh, Catow? Oh, sorry, couldn't read that.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
All right, Derek Catow, I live in the proposed South Cumberland Heights Historic District. I am one of the applicants and the chairperson leading this effort in our neighborhood. I would say the last three, four months, a team of about eight people have been working very hard canvassing the neighborhood, getting these signatures on the petitions, and it's been a great experience, meeting your neighbors and knowing them, you know, I think it's a really good thing, right? But per staff's report, you know, we met the minimum 25%, or we exceeded it. I shouldn't say pretty easily, I mean, like I said, it was pretty, it's not an easy thing to, you know, potentially face people slamming the door on you, right? So, tonight, the team, we ask of you to continue supporting us and hopefully moving us forward onto the next step of this process. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. And last on this issue is Catherine Yamada.
Hi, I'm Catherine Yamada. I live in the proposed South Cumberland Historic, South Cumberland Heights Historic District that is proposed, and I'd like to see it come to fruition. My family and I have lived there since '79, we love our neighborhood, and we'd like to see it stay as it was when we moved in, or close to it, so thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and unless there's any comments, I guess we could take a vote if there's a motion.
Yeah, I move that we recommend the city move forward with the survey.
Do you have a second?
Yes, spell out, South Cumberland Heights Historic District.
The South Cumberland Heights Historic District Survey.
Sure.
Second.
Oh.
I had a pause.
You'll have another chance.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Doom?
Yes.
Commissioner Cragnotti?
Yes.
Commissioner Vertanian?
Yes.
Chair Shire?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 to move forward.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, 7B, we have a proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District, and again, this is for the review of the petition requesting that City conduct a historic resources survey.
So, ditto to all the preliminary material. Casa Verdugo is a somewhat smaller district at 112 properties, but still a good-sized district for Glendale. We have the owners of 50 properties who've signed the petition, bringing us to 45%, so they squeaked out a 1% margin over their friends and neighbors. Obviously, this meets the minimum criterion also, and I'm sure there are people who want to speak about that.
There are. So we'll open the public hearing for this item, and it's Sean Bressel.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission. I'm wearing my Casa Verdugo hat for this portion of the meeting, so. My name is Sean Bressel, and my wife and I live at 1213 North Maryland, which is within the proposed boundaries of the Casa Verdugo Historic District, and I am one of the three applicants for the district. We're extremely pleased to note, as Mr. Platt has stated, that we received valid petitions from 45% of the properties within the proposed district. We actually submitted petitions from about 54% of the properties, but as Mr. Platt noted, because of some recent ownership changes, they were not able to verify them. But in either case, I think you'll agree that this is a very strong showing in support of the historic district survey by the residents of the neighborhood. And as my friend Derek said, it's a lot of hard work, and it's not easy, so I want to thank all the members of the Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee for their support, and especially those who knocked on the doors and gathered the signatures, people like Chris Cragnotti, Robin Fie, Lori and Dean Hartwell, Matt Long, Paula Sigmund-Lowry, Laurel Perlman, Mary Wallace, and me. And let me thank, again, our financial angels, those groups and individuals who funded our historic district application fee, the Glendale Historical Society, Ross Point Mountain HOA, Chris Cragnotti, Laurel and Mark Perlman, and Heather Norris, and me. But please don't tell Heather that, because she doesn't know that we gave money.
This is being recorded.
Oh, okay. So we greatly appreciate their generosity. Finally, I just wanted to note, as Derek alluded to, you know, we set out to create a historic district and ended up creating a community. Through this process, we have met many of our neighbors for the first time, we've created bonds with new neighbors and ones that we knew but maybe not so well, and we've engaged more people in the life of the neighborhood. That's good and bad. I can't walk my dogs anymore without running into somebody and having a conversation, no, no, that's good. That's what neighborhoods should be doing. So, that was really quite unexpected, and it has been incredibly rewarding. So, Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission, we are Casa Verdugo, and we ask for your support for the survey. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker card, Catherine Yurka.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Yurka, and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. We are, of course, thrilled that both Casa Verdugo and South Cumberland Heights Historic Districts are moving forward, and thank the residents for their hard work to make this possible. I did want to raise a concern related to the surveys, and this is something that has kind of preoccupied me since the Neodrera Drive survey, and that involves whether or not properties are evaluated, both as historic district contributors and as individually eligible historic resources. Such properties that meet both criteria are given a status code of 5B on a survey, and that's standard practice for properties to be evaluated for both. Francesca Smith, whom you know, so that she doesn't know of any city that would prepare a historic district survey and not evaluate properties for individual eligibility as well, which means that they are either already listed on a register, eligible listing, or appear eligible for listing. It's our understanding that the city has decided not to allow this status code unless a property is already on the register. And when Architectural Resources Group did the Neodrera Drive Historic District Survey, they found at least three houses that appeared to be individually eligible for the Glendale Register, and in my opinion, these were not like borderline properties, they were quite obviously eligible, but they were not allowed to use the 5B status code, they could only identify them as contributors. Surveys are important planning documents, and I think that they should be prepared fully and accurately. Glendale is not profligate with its survey monies, and so we should take advantage of the opportunities that we have to identify historic resources and make sure that properties are flagged in the system. If a property would be picked up in a historic district survey, you better believe that TGHS is going to pick up on it as well, and you know we're going to make a fuss if some work is proposed at the property. So property owners are really being deprived of an accurate evaluation of their property. Historic district surveys are done with great care, there are detailed DPR forms for each property. In other words, surveyors are already doing everything necessary to make an evaluation that a property appears individually eligible, and that identification is important because of the much lower standards that apply to alterations to contributors, which may render an individual historic resource no longer eligible. We ask that the commissioners communicate to staff the expectation that surveys will identify properties that appear eligible for the Glendale Register, as well as those that are already listed on it, and of course, contributors and non-contributors. And if this doesn't happen, we hope that you would be willing to inquire specifically about what properties appeared to be individually eligible when the surveys are ultimately presented to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and move on to comments, or, you know, we should have to respond to that?
Sure. What I'm here for. Ms. Yurka is correct, we have in the past not looked at individually eligible properties, and I believe that is standard practice for many of the consultants who work around the Los Angeles area doing these surveys. There are two forms that you use when you conduct a survey, two of the state forms, the 523A form, the DPR 523A, and the DPR 523B. 523A is the form that's generally used for a windshield survey, and it's a windshield survey that usually is looking at historic districts in Glendale, and I believe other cities. I'm sure there are exceptions to that, but I don't think we're the only city that doesn't do the 523B forms for, to determine if something might be individually eligible. The difference between these is 523A is looking from the street at the architecture, does this look like a contributing building? We've already established whether it's a district, identifying the character-defining features that you see from the street, and you move on to the next property. It would be wonderful, and I have no objection to doing surveys that would look at individual properties, but the cost would skyrocket beyond what we do for our windshield surveys for the historic districts, and that's partly why we haven't looked to do this in recent surveys. We've also had the experience of the original Cumberland Heights survey, which did identify individually eligible properties on a basis that I cannot fathom, when I go back and look at it, and some of the 5B properties that were identified in no way looked like they should be, and there were architecturally much better examples throughout the district than some of the ones that were chosen as 5B. I wasn't here for that process, but I'm told that it was something of a beauty contest, that's the term people use here when they just say, "Well, that one looks nice, and that one looks nice, and it's better than the others." That's not really the intensive-level survey that we would need to identify individual properties. So if the historical society and the commission want to lobby council when we go to them to ask for the funds to do the survey, or actually, I guess it should happen when we actually do the request for proposals, because we'd have to put that into the request, I think that would be a good use of time if people do feel strongly about this, but it's not our practice, and I can't recommend it to be our practice right now, based on the fact that I know that it's a substantial financial difference between the windshield survey and the intensive survey. Ms. Yurka's comment about possibly identifying things that look like they might be at least architecturally eligible is something we could talk to consultants about, that might be an easier step, but to say that it appears, to give it that status code, I'm not sure that we're quite ready to go there on the windshield survey. It's also something we could talk to the consultants about before we issue the RFP, to see if I'm wrong, and this is completely consistent across the board, but it's not our experience, and I believe it's not the experience of most consultants.
So sorry, did I hear correctly, in the Neodrera Drive survey, were there properties that were identified as both?
No, I'm not sure. We have 5Bs in the Neodrera Drive survey? I'll have to look into that. I don't remember that.
So can we ask the applicant surveyors to give an estimate, if it's going to cost more, what it would cost to have a full Monti?
Not, well, just as a general question, sure.
Yeah, as part of their...
If it would cost more, that would be...
I mean, as part of the consideration.
That would be part of a bid. What I would want to do...
Yeah, just do an alternative.
What I would want to find out first is, is this standard practice, am I completely off-base, and what are the differences? My understanding is that most district surveys are done as a windshield-level, it's called a reconnaissance survey, and we don't dig deep enough to make that individual determination. I'll have to find out what happened with Neodrera, I don't remember that, but maybe they were so obvious. But, I mean, yeah, we'll definitely do a little digging before we put out the RFP. That probably won't happen before the next commission meeting, most likely, so we can continue talking about it.
Okay. All right, with that, is there a motion for the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District? I would like to move that the HPC authorized staff to move forward with obtaining friends from City Council to hire a consultant to conduct the survey for the Casa Verdugo Historic District.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I've got the second. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cragnotti?
As a resident of Casa Verdugo, I must abstain.
That is correct. Commissioner Doom?
Yes.
You were actually supposed to leave the room, in case to say, and I should have remembered that.
I should have too, sorry.
Luckily, this isn't one of these critical ones. Commissioner Vertanian?
Yes.
And Chair Shire?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you also for all of your efforts on this. Okay, the next item, 7C, is 314 East Harvard Street, and this is a Glendale Register nomination.
So we have a very well-loved building by its current owners, and probably not by its former users, I don't know, but by me and many people, definitely. The Kiefer and Ira Mortuary Building, which is now the headquarters of the Assistance League of Glendale, the Assistance League has filed a very, very well-put-together nomination, lots of good research, and this is just for the Glendale Register. It is not being nominated for the Mills Act application. So I'll quickly go over the history, here's the building, built in 1928, designed by Alfred Priest. It was built to be the new headquarters of the Kiefer and Ira Mortuary, so we see E. Mill and John in front of their previous mortuary on Broadway in Los Angeles. That photo's from 1926, the business was established in 1922. Looking at the building in the background, you can tell they had good taste in architecture from the beginning. They came to Glendale, and they hired Alfred Priest, another sign of their good taste in architecture. He's one of the few early Glendale architects who we can say is a master architect. We know enough about his career, we know enough about putting his works in context, and there's been enough research done about him to suggest that he's very important to our history. He did the Security Trust Building, Glendale's first skyscraper, which is on the Glendale Register. He did the Russell Furniture Building, which is now the Sealy's Building, although you can't really see his work anymore, most of it's been obliterated by a later renovation. And he's done single-family houses around town, he did everything, and he did it all really well. Here is a little advertisement for Kiefer and Ira, they were in business all the way up until 2002, and Kiefer kept business running, and the Assistance League purchased the property after the mortuary closed in 2002. They've been excellent stewards of the building since then, it's in really good condition, we'll talk about that in a minute. Just looking at it, it's pretty interesting architecturally, it's a low-rise building with a high-rise feel, it's got this great front gable with the tall window infilled with some interesting colored glasswork, and then we have this kind of stumpy tower, but it's still a tower, it still feels nice and tall. It's got some Gothic design elements with the pointed arches and the stone trim, the octagonal tower, it's got very interesting massing, it's almost residential in scale, but very, very institutional in its feel ultimately. Here's some detail shots, one of my favorite features are these, the bricks that are raised above the surface of the wall are called clinker bricks, which means they're left in the kiln longer, and they get heavily fired, they get darker and kind of misshapen, and they're really well-used on this building, and it's kind of fun to see those. You've got these kind of battered buttresses holding up the corner of the tower, more pointed windows, and here's a detail of that central stained, or the stained glass window and the gable on the left side. Even this wrought iron sign dates back to the mortuary days, and it's a lovely kind of sign that I don't think we have anything else like that in Glendale that I've seen. Here is the driveway of the building that was originally used for the hearse's to pull in, it has its original concrete paving in really good condition, and then you see the port cochere, this is kind of looking south, I'm sorry, looking north on the left and looking south on the right, so the hearse would pull into the port cochere, and then there was a garage structure behind. Another detail of the window, and another detail of the concrete driveway. Some work has been done on the building, this has some of the least obtrusive seismic upgrade work that I've seen on a reinforced masonry building, so this metal bar that you see across here is part of the structural bracing. When you go onto the wall behind this on the inside, you see it kind of, another bar on the inside, and it's, what they avoided were those kind of tiebacks, where you have those little square plates and the screwed-on bolts, or the threaded rods, which usually disfigure these buildings, so this was a really nice upgrade. And here on the upper right, you can see the alley facade on the west, which shows the side of the building, so you can... the side of the building, so you graduate from the really high-style front part of the building to a more utilitarian middle section. There's a gap between these two, and then you have the garage building that is now the thrift shop for the Assistance League. Speaking of which, you have it there. These door openings were basically just reused as new storefronts, they were infilled with the glass to create the thrift shop, and there's still roll-down gates that come down at night. So even at that minor level, this building has really retained its original character. There's a courtyard in the center of the building, which is not visible from the street, but because it is an exterior feature, we're including it as part of the designation. As you know, the interiors, which they have some lovely interior spaces and features in here, are not protected through designation, but we definitely want to capture all of the parts of the building that, that we should be capturing. In the courtyard, you also see some of the seismic work, some of the bracing on this right-hand picture, you can see the metal straps bolted into the wall. Here is the interior space, which we just show you to show the window from the inside, and this picture doesn't really convey, but there are a couple of niches on either side of this central arched opening I'll talk about in two seconds. Here is part of the seismic work, as best I understand, they had to infill a couple of windows, but they did it in a way that meets the Secretary of the Interior standards. My best guess, not seeing any specs for the work, is they had to create some sheer walls here, so they removed a couple of windows, they infilled that area with brick to give it the stability, and then they used brick that was clearly differentiated from, from the original. I wouldn't have chosen that red color necessarily, but they did, and it's differentiated, and it's okay, so. Here are a couple of other aspects of the building that have been altered, and this building's largely unaltered. We looked at every window, there's one loufered window on the back of the building, kind of set toward the center, that was installed at some point, we're not sure. This in the center picture is the front entrance, this gate was installed, I believe, pretty much when the Assistance League took over the building. I mentioned the two kind of niches on either side of the central arch in the, kind of the chapel room, those contained these metal panels that were then reused for this gate. So even at that level, without us preservationists telling them what to do, they loved the building enough to kind of, kind of work with what they had. And then this little railing, this is the front window, and a small railing that we think is appropriate to the design was installed. So overall, we have a building with very few alterations, it clearly meets standard three for its architecture, it also meets standard three for its association with a master builder in Alfred Priest, and staff is recommending that the Commission vote to recommend designation for this.
That was a great presentation, but I think you got the year of death of the architect incorrect on your slide. You said that he passed away in 1909, or 1903, rather. I believe, according to the internet, it was 1929. 1903 would have been tough for him to design this building.
That is very true.
Yeah.
When did he die, Chris?
According to the internet, 1929.
Okay. 1857's good?
No.
Okay, we will fix that.
Oh, that part's not right either.
We will fix that. As, as-
1874.
1874, hmm. I found one typo in the staff report also, which we can cop to, but I won't unless you want to ask me about it.
No.
Thank you for that.
Okay, with that great overview, we'll open the public hearing. We've got a couple speaker cards, first is Judy Cabrera.
I'm Judy Cabrera. I signed the application as Recording Secretary for the Assistance League. We have very few members here tonight, but I don't want you to think it's indicative of our enthusiasm, it's more that we don't drive at night anymore, many of us. No, we're very enthused, we're really excited, we love the building. We will celebrate our 75th birthday next year, and we would love to be able to celebrate also our designation. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And next is Sean Bressel.
Thank you, Chairwoman Shire, and members of the Commission. My name is Sean Bressel, and I'm now wearing my TGHS badge, and so I'm speaking on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. We were very pleased to work with the Assistance League of Glendale on the nomination, we're very proud of the nomination, and we're very pleased that the Assistance League has decided to put this beautiful building forward for the Glendale Register. During this process, you've seen what a beautiful building is, it is, I know you've driven by it many times, and you've seen it, some of you probably have gone to services in there and know it, know it well. It is a gorgeous building, it is unique in Glendale, and it really deserves to be on the Glendale Register. And also, its association with Alfred F. Priest, who I will correct for the record, was born in Nebraska in 1887, and he died here in Los Angeles in 1931. By the way, if you want to see the death certificate, I have it.
Even my numbers are wrong, wow.
And he, one of the, one of the, one of the really, ironies of him is, is that he, he cut his hand at his construction site in West Los Angeles, and he got sepsis, and he died. And, and then his service was held at this mortuary that he designed. The tragedies of his life, I could go on, but he did beautiful work. He did so much in what was then downtown Glendale, particularly on North Grand Boulevard, he did the Security Trust Building at the corner, he did the Penrods Building, now the Famous Building, and he did many, many other very notable buildings. I think, he probably has more properties on the Glendale Register designed by him than anybody else, but I'm not quite sure of that, but he certainly is, is well-represented, and this property should be on, on the Glendale Register. I just want to conclude that, and say that it has been a pleasure to work with the Assistance League, and to find out more about their work. I knew about Thrift Alley, but I didn't know all the, all the programs that they're doing in the community for our seniors, for our children, and for the community generally, and so I appreciate the Assistance League and their work, and we're so happy that they put their building forward for the Glendale Register. And we, at the Glendale Historical Society, urge your support for this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Margaret Hammond.
Margaret. Slowly, right?
No hurry.
Don't worry. No, it was her in permanence anyway. Okay. My name's Margaret Hammond, and I've been a resident of Glendale for 60 years, lived on Adams Hill all that time also, so I'm part of that group. And this building, when I joined the, we were doing the Doctor's House, the Glendale Historical, we did a survey on our own, we couldn't get the city to help us. And this building was one that I surveyed, and some others in that area, they gave me that area to do, to do the survey. And we put it up, we wanted to put it up then, can you imagine, 40 years ago? But the owner didn't want to do it at that time, and we didn't have the money to do it, because we were busy with saving the Doctor's House, and the Alex Theater was a really big thing that we were taking care of. But over the years, there's been a lot of things that we've saved in Glendale, the train station, the Good House, I mean, it's unbelievable. We were just a small group, and we just plugged away at it. But the amazing thing is, when you think back, like, the recycle, you know Ginger Brenberg was for recycle, right? And we were the, one of the first city, I think we may be the first city in America to have a recycle program, and I think she's already been honored. Well, you know, in a way, we look after that. Our people at the Assistance League, we take in articles that are recycled from people to be recycled to people. We have a building that is historic, we recycled, and aside from that is, our volunteers are unpaid volunteers, and they're all recycled too, because they're like me, well, they're not as old as me, 90, I guess, it's, there's a few of them though, that are 90, isn't there, yeah. So anyway, it's, we work very hard, and it's why we do that. Dress the schoolchildren in Glendale, take the book readings to the schools, raise money for the library, give them $1,000 for each library, and we do the SATs. We have a senior luncheon, at which I work every month. They kid me about it, because I do the parking lot, and, because we have, you know, triple parking, so somebody has to be there to be in charge of it, otherwise they all park on the, on the other aisle. But I mean, we really do a lot, and that building is well worth saving, it's beautiful. The window alone, when we had to have that window replaced, cost over $10,000, and we did it, we raised the money amongst ourselves. You know, we all, the people that belong to the group, you know, they give a lot, not just of their time, but of their money too. And it's because we all love Glendale, and want to be part of the community, and have been, many of them longer than me even. So, I mean, the building means a lot to us. And if you, if some of you have gone in and seen the interior, the beautiful painted beams, just gorgeous, and the doors are all this thick, and the hardware is original, everything, nothing was taken out of the building, except for those two things, the arches, and they were put to good use on the front of the building for the gate. So I think there's no way that you can't feel that this building is worth saving. We've always felt that way, I have always felt that way. And as I say, I've been at it for 40 years, so I'm glad to say, see this now coming about. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and then comments from commissioners or discussion.
I can start, yeah. Well, first of all, I would like to thank Claire Collins and her husband for most enjoyable tour. I've been in, in sadder times, I've been inside the building for friends that have passed on. I enjoyed the building then, but not in the same way, but she gave a full e-ticket tour of the whole place. It was, I saw everything that possibly could be seen. I, I've enjoyed the building, I used to work across the street at Glendale Public Library, the Carnegie Library, and we'd see it every day. And I just wanted to say, a few notes that I just put down, it was built 1928, Tudor Revival, use of brick outstanding, and now I can't read my writing. It survived the 1971 earthquake, that was the thing that took down so many buildings in Glendale. Original steel sash windows, the windows designed and restored by the Judson Studios, which I don't think you've mentioned, but they were originally Judson windows, studio windows, and the Assistance League had them restored and put back in, and they're beautiful if you get a chance. I just wanted to say, I would like to do criteria too, but I don't have the time right at the moment, a little, just a little history on Emil Kiefer. I attend Emil's and Leon Kiefer's grave at Grandview. He worked for the Glendale Fire Department on Broadway, next to the Pulliam Undertaker, which he did work for at the same time for Pulliam Undertaking, which is how he got into the undertaking business. He was at the fire station that Marion Morrison used to bring his dog, Duke, and drop it off on his way up to, to Doran Street School, and because he didn't like the name Marion, he adopted, they, they kept calling him Little Duke or Big Duke, and depending on how you hear the story, either he was Big Duke, or the dog was Big Duke, but that's how John Wayne got the name The Duke. Anyway, like I said, he went to, John Wayne went to the Doran Street School. It's ironic, Leon Kiefer, who's the wife of Emil, her father's name is Charles Shattuck also, but he's a different Charlie Shattuck. He's buried right next to his daughter, and also at Grandview.
Not, not the architect?
Not the architect, he's Charlie Shattuck, the, he built the railroad up to Montrose. And I interviewed her many, many times, because she knew Glendale. She came, she arrived here on March 4, 1913, and she knew everything that you'd ever want to know about Glendale. And I sat at her feet and listened and listened. She was, had children's librarian at the Carnegie Library, Alma Donforth was the librarian itself, and she worked there before she married Emil. And so she saw that lot long before the building was there, and so I'm sure that when it came to the point where they were going to put a building there, that was a spot dear to her heart, and that's why the building is placed where it is today. Anyway, I am all for it, I mean, I could write, stay on the line a lot, much longer, but I want to give the rest to the commissioners, but yes, does this building, should it be on the Glendale Register? Yes, enthusiastically, yes, so that's my, that's everything I got to say at this moment, so.
Thank you.
I'll just say, I was not able to tour the building at this time for this meeting, but several years ago, when I sat on the Board of the Glendale Historical Society, we did an event there called Then and Now, where we did an open house tour of this building and the new, brand-new building at the time that was built right next door, just sort of, sort of showed the dichotomy between old and new, and it was, it was a very interesting concept, and it was very well-attended. In any case, yeah, for all the reasons that have already been stated in the staff report, Margaret, thank you for everything that you shared, I too enthusiastically support this nomination.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to say much, except everything that they said is great, it's a really awesome building, it really is a great thing to have downtown, like she said, right next to that new building, just very cool. And the tour I got, I'm sure was like Mike's, was really very entertaining, despite the fact it was a mortuary. It was really, really interesting to see how that sort of a space functions, was quite interesting. So, yes, it will be a yes for me.
Well, again, yeah, thank you for bringing this before us, it's a beautiful resource that Glendale has, so I fully support it. I just had two questions for you staff, I mean Jay, for staff. Why, why no Mills Act, do we know?
They did not apply for the Mills Act. I don't know, I don't believe that nonprofits get a break on property taxes, if they do, that could be part of it also.
I see. Just curious. And then because there's no Mills Act, obviously we can't put conditions on it all, but if we noticed something, they've taken such good care of this building, but there's some woodwork on the upper outside balcony where the entrance to the apartment was, it's pretty exposed, so if you just want to make a comment-
We discussed that on our tour, and it was pointed out to them, and could be a future maintenance, yeah, but we don't have that.
But I mean, overall, it's taken care of well, I just, I just noticed, yeah, okay.
But you can say.
Anyway, fully, fully support the nomination, is there a motion?
I'll nominate it. In honor of Leon Shattuck Kiefer. The Historic Preservation Commission recommends to the City Council that the property at 314 East Harvard Street to be named the Kiefer and Ira Mortuary be designated as a historic resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
Second.
I think I got Chris first. Okay. This is a real challenge here.
Roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Doom?
Yes.
Commissioner Vertonian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cagnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Chair Shire?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0, we have a recommendation for listing on the register.
Thank you again, congratulations.
Thank you, good job.
Okay, next on our agenda, we will now move to number six, Old Business and 6A. This is a Commission discussion and feedback to staff regarding review of the preliminary draft of the South Glendale Historic Resources Survey.
Okay, hold on one second.
No problem.
Okay, so this discussion is kind of a continued discussion from last month and also from the month before, and so the Commission and, and members of the Historical Society, and by extension, the public through these meetings, is, is able to comment on the ongoing work that Historic Resources Group, Group is doing on the preliminary South Glendale Historic Resources Survey. So just in terms of timing and where we are in the schedule, we now have a date that we believe the draft environmental impact report is going to be released, and this is the draft EIR for the South Glendale Community Plan, which is a big planning document for all of South Glendale. The Historic Resource Survey is incorporated into the community plan as part, along with the South Glendale Historic Context, that was reviewed and approved by the Commission a couple of years ago. So these two documents will inform ongoing use of the community plan if it ends up getting approved ultimately by City Council, and so your input is going to be focused for the, for the survey on what ultimately gets put into the draft report, and then we're going to bring, bring this back to you- And then we're going to bring, bring this back to you probably in February, where Historic Resources Group will be here again. We're going to be presenting the community plan to you that night and the survey, so it's going to be a big night of discussion. And that will be your opportunity to make your recommendations to city council. So everything we were talking about tonight and for the last couple of months and possibly even for the January meeting will be informative and helping us kind of finalize the document that goes into the draft, which itself will be preliminary because it's a draft, and then we'll see if any changes happen after that. But in terms of tonight's meeting, I'm really hoping to get as much feedback from the commission as possible, informed by the community's input, because this will be the last chance for us to work with HRG to make changes in the actual document that goes into the draft report. The draft report very, at this point, will likely be released before the next HPC meeting, although the way things have been going, I can't promise that. I may have another bite at this. But, so I'm very hopeful to hear from you in as much detail and as much time as we can take to go over this. I wanted to prepare, the Historical Society has prepared some comments. I wanted to give a couple of just kind of thought points before, before we go into public comment, because I don't really have much of a presentation. We've already talked about what the survey is, and you've heard from HRG as well as from me. But there were a few issues that kind of rise to the top of the discussion as I review the Historical Society's comments. And this is by no means something that isn't part of the discussion, but I wanted to let you know where, where staff is coming from, as well as where Historic Resources Group is coming from in terms of best practices and our conception of the survey. And then you'll hear from the Historical Society, and then we'll be able to talk back and forth through the question period to see what your thoughts are. Thinking about methodology, there is, there seems to be some concern that the methodology was developed in the absence of input from the commission and the community. That is standard practice for surveys, and I can't think of one that I know of, and HRG isn't familiar with one, where methodology becomes a group process. And methodology is kind of the backbone of the survey. So what, what HRG has done is prepare a methodology that applies to all of the properties that they're looking at, and then they've tailored some of it specifically for things like craftsmen properties that are particularly sensitive, that we're particularly concerned about, having lost so many, how can we protect the ones that we have? But also, how do we discern which ones should be protected and which ones may not, despite their charm, kind of be worthy of that protection? So this brings to a point that I just wanted to hit up front, that, that both myself and HRG are pretty adamant that any survey methodology looking at craftsmen houses will look at altered porches, usually an enclosed porch on a craftsman, and altered siding, which is usually asbestos siding placed either over the original siding or in lieu of the original siding. Those are kind of deal breakers for historic resource material. We still can make those six Ls, and we'll still hear from the commission if you disagree with that, obviously, but that is pretty standard preservation practice, and I think we're going to have a little, a little discussion on that tonight. So I just wanted to raise that. I wanted to raise the issue of historic versus historical. The idea that, you know, and I'm a preservationist, and I love old buildings, and I know that our community loves old buildings, and I know that our community recognizes that just because an old building exists and is fairly intact doesn't necessarily mean it's eligible for the Glendale Register. And we can find other ways to protect those, and we can do that through historic districts. We can do that through use of the 6L category, which we can talk about tonight if you'd like. But just in terms of differentiating between what's historic and what's historical, the word historical basically just means something from the past, something that exists, that lingers from the past, or was a fact or an event from the past. Historic has the added connotation of it's significant in the past, it has meaning. And, and it's key for us, key for me in my daily work here, key for preservationists in general, to really constantly be trying to find where is the meaning? And how do we separate the wheat and the chaff? How do we find out which properties are ultimately eligible for protection through designation and which may have to either find other means of protection, or possibly we have to resign to the fact that we can't necessarily protect them? I wanted to point out the language of criterion three, which is for the Glendale Register. I didn't highlight it, but the point I wanted to make was that we're looking for distinctive and exemplary specimens. We're looking for things that are different from the norm, from the average. They still need to tell a story, but there has to be something to separate them from the others that tell the story of, like, I am a beautiful building, I'm old, I'm fairly intact, but where, where's my story? And there's an inherent subjectivity to all of this. So that's where you are coming in, where the community's coming in, and where I come in. We're constantly trying to juggle these things and make these discriminating determinations. So I just wanted to remind the commission of the language in the ordinance. And then finally, I wanted to mention that there seems to be a little bit of back and forth fighting over what previous surveys have said and what the current survey says. And there is room for disagreement among experts. There's room for disagreement between HRG and the firms that have done previous surveys, room for disagreement among all of us. But when we're arguing over whether something should be listed as a Glendale Register eligible property versus a California or National Register property, I defer to the fact that if our consultant who's looked at, you know, a broad range of properties over time, decades now, and doesn't think that something necessarily rises to California or National Register status, even if a previous survey did, as long as the survey status code has a five in front of it, it means it's a historic resource under SEQA. It means it's going to be given the protections of, the same exact protections of anything that's a three code or a one code, in terms of things that are not designated yet or listed, but that are eligible for listing. So those are just some baseline points I wanted to raise, just to kind of inform your thoughts as we move forward. But I can answer any questions about that, but it might be better to do that in the context of bigger discussions, however you like.
Yeah, maybe I open up the public hearing to see those other comments, and we can discuss everything at once.
Sure.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, we'll open up the public hearing, and first we have Catherine Yurka.
And you want your slides up right now? Okay. And then just hit the, either the down or the right. Let me go back on the left, key?
What is? Oh, so down or right function?
Yeah, that's the same.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening again. My name is still Kathy Yurka. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. Thank you for the opportunity to address the South Glendale Historic Resources Survey again. We appreciate what I am forced to describe by this time as your patience, as well as your hard work in examining the properties that have been brought to you both by HRG and also TGHS. I know that you have reviewed each of our suggested properties carefully, including many site visits, and I'd like to thank you all for that. TGHS is asking you to support the addition of 41 properties to the survey as historic resources, the addition of an eligible historic district, and upgrading two properties to California National Register status. The presentation I'm doing highlights a few of our specific requests and rationales. It does not repeat the entire material that I sent to you. So staff have asked repeatedly for your comments on survey methodology. And we do believe that the HPC can reject specific restrictive provisions without undermining the survey as a whole. We ask that you reject the automatic exclusion of any property with an enclosed porch or the addition of composition siding. This affects a handful of properties built between 1902 to 1913, well before what qualifies as early Glendale development in the survey, when greater alterations are explicitly permissible. We note that a property on Wilson, I did not write down the address, that is from 1901, was added as 5S3 to the survey, even though it had all its windows replaced, which is supposed to be disqualifying, but that was allowed because of its age. I have a hard time seeing the difference between 1901, 1902, or 1903. These are very early properties and properties of significance. Just a few months ago, the HPC unanimously found the Beggs House eligible for the Glendale Register despite an enclosed porch. And that house was also moved from its original location. In 2014, the commission unanimously found Hovagwimian House eligible despite the addition of cement board siding, when it was highly likely, according to staff, that it had wood siding originally. In neither case were conditions relating to these issues even added to the Mills Act. So it seems clear that commissioners do not believe that such changes are intrinsically disqualifying, nor do staff believe such changes are intrinsically disqualifying because they recommended the approval of these properties. We note that National Register guidance on applying criteria for evaluation explicitly states, "A property can be significant not only," sorry, I expected to be able to read that easily. "A property can be significant not only for the way it was originally constructed or crafted, but also for the way it was adapted at a later period, or for the way it illustrates changing tastes, attitudes, and uses over a period of time." The porch enclosures were all early alterations and, I think, adaptations. The porch enclosure is a part of the historical development of the craftsmen in Glendale. They occur throughout the city. We noted many other examples, including one that we dropped from the original list because there was another alteration. Many of these porch enclosures had other disqualifying changes to it. We note again that the Glendale Register has no integrity requirement. But we don't think it should preclude you from taking integrity to account, into account, but we think it should discourage requirements that are so restrictive, more so than for National Register properties. Properties found to be historic resources in adopted survey need a very good reason to be dropped altogether. So, for example, the Dunn Edwards Building of the California National Guard, the latter was found California Register eligible for its architecture, or a good reason for properties to be downgraded. And I understand what, what Mr. Platt is saying, that a five is still a historic resource. I, I actually think that, that finding, say, the Great White Hut, National Eligible, National Register eligible, as it's been found before, is an additional layer of protection because it is just a stronger statement about the importance of that building. None of these buildings, the building types have gotten less rare in the years since the survey was done. For associative criteria, I want to focus on the industrial properties built by Merrill Baird, a prominent Glendale-based architect and city council member for Fred Peterson. 823 Milford at the top is already 5S3 in the survey. The bottom three are 6L, may warrant special consideration in planning. We think the bottom three should also be individually eligible for their association with Baird. But even more, we certainly think that these four buildings together should qualify as a historic district. So that would include 823 Milford. The fact that HRG found them 6L as a small cluster of industrial buildings indicates that they have sufficient integrity for that. Otherwise, they would have just been found 6Z and kind of nothing. These properties also have been found eligible in previously adopted surveys, so I could, we could have just included it in that batch as well. The San Fernando Road Corridor survey, the 800 block of Milford, the 500 block of Commercial contain the best examples of a group of industrial buildings dating from the second quarter of the 20th century. It's recommended these buildings be considered eligible for the National Register as a group of related buildings. We ask that the commission acknowledge these remaining examples by a notable Glendale architect for a single client who had a business in Glendale for 70 years located at 823 and 516 Commercial, and ask that they be found eligible as a local historic district. Also, LH Wilson, he was by miles the most important figure in the development of the San Fernando Road Corridor. He built dozens of buildings, all of which have been altered in the survey area, none of which have been found eligible for the Glendale Register. This is his earliest extant building. He only moved to Glendale in 1921, and it's the only recognizable commercial building of his that, that we, that we know of. And then I'm going to end with my, what I call, can't let it go, because I watch the NPR, listen to the NPR Politics podcast. American Mediciel, no streamlined modern building was found eligible, individually eligible in the survey. As with Dunn Edwards and the Suppose You Drive truck rental buildings, HRG finds this not distinctive. I just cannot buy that when I look at the lines of this building. And we went over the character-defining features in all of the materials we sent you. We note that they don't name buildings that are more distinctive. This does not need to be the best building in the United States. It's, this is a local survey. We need to know of better examples in Glendale, and I defy you to find one. And then finally, some multifamily properties. I really regret that 119 East Garfield in the upper left does not photograph better. It is a lovely minimal traditional. HRG's response to our comments was that there are, quote, "other examples" in Glendale. I am sure that's true. I am also sure that there are no better examples in the 8,500 properties that were included in this survey. And I have found no, no better examples in areas that have these duplexes and triplexes, but that have alterations, that have large buildings that have been constructed, attached to the rear of the property, or just lack the kind of fineness of, of material and design as this building. 220 North Louise, upper right, it's just, it's a lovely six-plex on a lovely block. Bottom left corner, 241 North Penwood, an elegant courtyard apartment that is as good as the examples that they found to be historic resources in the survey. The only alteration is a reversible security gate. That's not disqualifying. The Isabella, again, HRG's comment was that it's not a good example. There are no dingbats included as historic resources in the survey. It's an important resource type in Glendale. They should show us a better example. And then my last, last one is, I just, I love this house so much. And, and there are, and I would like to point out that with, I think, one exception, there are no 6Ls in the Diamond. There's only Planning District. Planning District has no legal meaning in Glendale. I think we're kidding ourselves if we think it's going to get a legal meaning soon, which means that even, this should be a 6L, at least, that it really, it just has no protections whatsoever. So, so I conclude just by saying that we, I think we make a very strong case based on evidence for these properties and the rest. And we believe it extremely likely that the HPC would find them eligible for the Glendale Register. And then I told Commissioner Morgan that I would also let anyone in our viewing audience know that if they would like a copy of all of the properties that we submitted, they should contact us through the TGH website, and I'll be happy to provide them. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Patty Nalle?
No.
Nalle, okay.
And I'll just quickly add, the, the materials submitted by TGHS are also part of the public record, so anyone from the public, Kathy? Anyone from the public could also get that from us, so, either way, so.
Good evening. I live in the Diamond, and thank you for going on the tour. I am to the Historical Society because I learned a lot about my own neighborhood. I had no idea. And as evidenced from the tour, when the question was asked, "Has anybody ever been here before?", no hands went up. There are two houses that qualified for mine, and another house in the neighborhood, and then the Historical Society is asking that you consider two more, one of which is my neighbor. And every time I walk by this house, I smile. And it's a fact. And it's a fabulous house. And there are a number of other neighborhoods in the neighborhood that maybe, the rich, what I learned on the tour was there are incredible rich details in all the houses. And there are about 15-plus bungalows there. And the neighborhood is cohesive, and to the point that the survey consultant recommended that it be given planning consideration. And my hope is that you will grapple with what that is supposed to mean, because all of these houses will disappear. It's where we live is considered transit-oriented district, which means that large-scale apartment buildings are going in right and left. They have not gone in on the individual bungalows, but there's a housing crisis, and our neighborhood is at great risk. And it's a lovely resource and should be identified as such. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Bruce Merritt.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner and members of the Commission. I'm going to just speak briefly about a sort of sliver of the survey that was done which relates to historic associations. There are three properties that the Historical Society believes ought to be given greater consideration than HRG gave them, and I'd like to address those. I think they've done a commendable job. We're happy to have this survey done, and we've been happy to see the incredible work that HRG has put into this. But I think sometimes when you come in from outside a community, you miss a little bit of the history of that community. And there are two essentially historical stories, or historic stories, that are overlooked in some of the decisions that they made. And because I am more historic than historical, I'm going to be using, you know, paper displays rather than the high-tech option that might have been available to me. The first of them relates to two properties on Everett Street that were basically built for the children, the son, one of the sons and one of the daughters of E.T. Byram. I won't belabor E.T. Byram's role in Glendale. I think you're all familiar with him. He was clearly one of the creators of this town. He was one of the five people that came together that created the original town site. He was the sales agent who sold the lots in the early days in the 1880s. He went on to have his finger in almost every pie that was going on in the first three decades of this city. His influence is huge. And indeed, his house, this is a page from the Shearer History Book, was the first two-story house built in Glendale, was built in the 1880s, and it still is there. And it is a recognized historic resource by HRG, as included in the survey. The question really is about two houses that were built just to the north of that house. This is Byram's original house. And this craftsman bungalow and one next to it on Everett Street were built in the 1920s for his son and for his daughter. The story here, now, we pointed out that these houses were all built on his original farm. When he divided up his segment of this original town site, all of the areas were divided up into lots, but he retained the top eight lots, the top eight parcels between Glendale and what is now Everett, just below California Street, as his farm. And in the middle of it, he actually built this particular farmhouse. And I'll just bring this up. You may have seen this map before. You can actually see his house there. The problem that HRG has made, and the error that they've made, is that they assume that the home site was the individual lot that this house was on. But in fact, the home site was the entire eight lots, which he conveyed in a manner that was, you see a lot of in the 19th century when businessmen were involved in high-risk type ventures, they would frequently give the title, convey the title of their property, of their home, to their wife. And that's indeed what Byram did in 1887. He took those eight parcels and conveyed them to his wife. And they were together the home site of the Byram family, long after he died in 1908. In fact, really, I think up into the 1920s when they began to sell them off, or give them away in the case of his two children, his son Ralph and his daughter Ruth. The story that needs to be told here is that the early days of Glendale was really not about individuals. Byram was the most high-profile individual, but his whole family was involved in the founding of this town. His wife is responsible for us calling ourselves Glendale, because the post office didn't want to let us use that name, because there was a Glendale in some other state. She went to the congressman and got him to pressure the post office to name this place Glendale. His brother-in-law, Elias Ayers, owned the first store. He built the first bank building. His sister-in-law, Harriet Harris, her house just went on the Register last year on Wilson Street. His son-in-law, Joseph Banker, who built these two houses for the son and the daughter, was active in Glendale for decades. He probably built the Good House. He owned that property at the time that we think the house was built. He later went on to be the city inspector, and he was acting city clerk for a while. So it's really misleading to say that Byram is the only guy. It's really an extended web of family connections. And that story, I think, is best reflected by keeping these two houses and recognizing them as a historic resource. Now, the other property I wanted to mention is at 641 East Harvard. Again, I have a low-tech photograph of it. It's really a lovely story and a half craftsman, built in 1913. It's had some alterations to the sidings and the windows, although they're in their original openings. I think, I would say, it should make it on architecture, but, you know, I'm not claiming any expertise on that. It was built, however, in 1913 by Herman Nelson, who was one of the principals, one of the officers, the cashier of the very first bank in Glendale. And the story again here is, for a town like Glendale in those early days to really prosper and develop, they needed a school, they needed some sort of transportation, they generally needed to incorporate, and they needed a bank. This is in the days before interstate banking, before even statewide banking. If you wanted your town to grow, you needed a bank. And when this Bank of Glendale was started in 1904, it was a big, big event, and he was part of that. He was the cashier, this was back not when cashiers were clerks, when cashiers were the guy with the key to the safe and the custody of the money. And he built this thing in 1913, and it's one of the few houses in this whole early neighborhood, this area right around here, which in the first two decades, excuse me, decades, was where all the movers and shakers in town lived. Then after a while, they began moving out. But there's only a handful of houses of really influential city founders left in this area, the Dr. Hunt House, the Good House, the Byram House, and the Nelson House. And I think that that's a historic resource that should be protected. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more speaker, Robin Fie.
Hello, I'm Robin Fie, and I live at the aforementioned Beggs House. I want to clarify, I do not have an enclosed porch. In case anybody's wondering, when did the enclosed porch happen? It didn't. But I also do want to say that I'm not necessarily against them. I feel if we have a 100-year-old resource to kind of disregard it because perhaps even the original owner said, "I don't need a porch this big. I would rather screen that in, or I would rather have some windows." Sunrooms were very popular in that era, and it was not uncommon that owners would turn an extra, because, you know, I got a big porch. Craftsmen had big porches then. It was not unusual that they would take part of it and maybe close it off and do something else with it, reappropriate it. So that's all I'd like to say. No enclosed porch. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you for confirming that, because I didn't think you had an enclosed porch at all either, or I missed something that day. Okay, with that, does anyone want to start with comments or have a suggestion for how we best go through this, or any questions for staff?
Well, some framework.
Some framework would be good.
If you guys have an idea, certainly.
Well, we could, go ahead.
I'm not sure, is there a method? Do we suggest properties one at a time, or in groups, or to add to the list, if you wish to add properties to the list? How do we?
Why not?
Well, I was, I was.
Do we do it one at a time, or a group, or the whole thing?
What I was thinking might be helpful is if there's any, first of all, questions for staff on the classifications and/or protections that come with that? If not, we can move right into maybe the packet that HRG did. And again, they're kind of separated by subject, but not necessarily. So maybe I just want to go page by page through those if people have specific comments.
If I can add something, you know, TGHS has done an amazing job sending people out all through this area, spending hundreds of hours, more maybe. But you guys also may have things that they haven't identified. So I want to make sure that you, as the Commissioners of Preservation in the City, also feel free to, you know, talk about anything you want to talk about. And then just in terms of the parameters, everything, every property that you identify, whether it's seconding TGHS, identifying things that have never been mentioned, disagreeing, whatever, I'm going to be struggling here to take notes. Those notes are going to be conveyed to HRG. We're going to sit down and kind of say, can we, with a straight face, respecting all these opinions, say that this does belong in the survey as a five or 6L or whatever? And so we're going to, we will update the survey preliminarily for this draft EIR going out in January. So everything that we can agree on, we'll go into that. Everything that we can't put in right now, that there isn't buy-in from the consultant, we're going to keep that. And then when we go to city council, well, when we come back to you with the draft EIR discussion, and then when we go to city council, those properties will also be part of those two reports, so that we're not, the goal is to not lose anyone's opinion here, and then to identify where we can shift and what gets elevated, what goes down. You know, you may have things that you think want to go down. It's not all just raising. It's, everything's in flux right now.
So I think, oh, sorry, did you want to go? So I'm going to suggest we start broad and maybe recommend, you know, Jay, you mentioned it, but I think TGHS and Kathy Yurka specifically have spent, again, hundreds of hours on this, which is clearly more, I'm going to guess, than all of us on this dais put together have had time to even consider. Honestly, not having had that much time to spend on any of this, I don't think I can add anything that hasn't already been looked at. So I'm going to suggest that we recommend that all 41 properties are given the status of 5S3 as historic resources, and that maybe if any of my colleagues have a problem with certain properties, we can talk those through instead of looking at them all one by one.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And then if you have specific questions, I've gone over the list with HRG, so if you're wondering why did they feel one way or another, I can answer questions as needed.
That's helpful.
I have a question.
Okay.
Listening to your explanation, Jay, earlier, you said deal breakers were, oh.
Listening to your explanation earlier with deal breakers regarding enclosed porches and siding, is there a timeframe for that to be a deal breaker if the enclosed porch is more than 100 years old or 75 years old?
No, the issue there is that the porch is one of, say, two of the character-defining features, one of the most important character-defining features of craftsmen style. So alterations to the porch, to the mind of HRG, and I believe other consultants in cities that have craftsmen architecture, is generally considered a deal breaker regardless of age, unless we have a story that goes along with it where we can make, the TGHS pointed out, the National Register Bulletin 15, which talks about alterations that are made later can achieve significance in their own right, but the very fact that they were done later doesn't make them significant. You have to be able to say, why was this significant? Why did the person, the family had a child with tuberculosis, and they created, I don't know what it would be, but there could be a story that could add to the reasoning for it. But in general, yeah, there wouldn't be a time cutoff for that.
Okay, so I got your definition on historic, because my next follow-up question is, when you say there's no timeframe, the definition I wrote down was adapted at a later period the way it illustrates changing tastes and attitudes. Would that be acceptable regardless of the timeframe also?
If we went with that, then we'd have to start designating buildings with vinyl windows. So that's a dangerous place to go.
All right, that's a good point. All right, that's why I asked. Thank you.
I have a couple thoughts and questions. In regards to the section, as you mentioned, the closed porches and compositional siding, I happen on the craftsmen style specifically to agree with HRG, is that it is a critical character-defining feature of a craftsman home, is that beautiful porch in the front. And if we're talking about the best rising to an eligible level of Glendale Register properties, then I think we need to look very carefully at the craftsmen's. Unfortunately, if we haven't done the amount of work that TGHS has done on our own, we are comparing these to nothing else in our head unless we've driven around saying, okay, already HRG has classified, say, 20 or 100, or I don't know what the numbers are, craftsmen style, and here are these prime examples of beautiful resources still intact, still with their, you know, open porches. And therefore to say then, okay, look, as much as we just love these individually by these pictures, we don't want to see anything go, we also do need to honor the hierarchy of these classifications and say, okay, this is better than another, and really take that into consideration. So I personally don't think that enclosed porches or the compositional siding, I think it absolutely takes away from, and it wouldn't rise to that best level. Now, I think a 6L would be absolutely appropriate. So it has that special consideration, but doesn't necessarily equal those of the best examples which were given 5S3 or higher. So that's my thoughts on the enclosed porch and siding topic.
I think for the seven that we're looking at, I feel like I'm echoing. Am I echoing out there?
It's okay.
I'm only echoing up here today. I think for the seven properties that are being recommended, these are the seven, these are seven properties that were built before 1918, which I think are considered more rare than the other resources. And Jay, you probably don't have this, and I don't know if we have it anywhere here in our package.
Would you have?
A breakout, no, no, sorry, I don't mean that, what I'm going to say next. A breakdown of how many of each property type HRG has already considered. For example, how many craftsmen homes prior to 1918 do we already have considered as 5S3 on this survey?
We don't have that, but it would be pretty easy. We couldn't do it right here, but we could do it because we have the spreadsheet, which we could organize by style, and then we could start counting, organize by style, and then by status code, and do a rough, well, an accurate count, actually, to tell you the numbers. Numbers alone won't tell you everything, but you could start then, as Commissioner Shire was saying, kind of doing some comparative analysis and finding what the better examples in your opinion are. You know, what we don't want to do is say that only the best architectural specimens get designated, but there is a point where we have to draw a line and start saying that some of the project properties that are more cookie-cutter, possible, you know, things out of the catalog, but we don't know, that just become kind of generic for the type, maybe the ones that are being excluded from 5S3. We are trying hard to kind of recognize those with 6L status and to remind the Commission and everyone else, 6L in the California status codes means it's ineligible for local, state, or federal designation, but that it may warrant special consideration in planning. The way we're proposing to use that, and we'll kind of flesh this out more before this process is finished, is that we're going to try to protect the historic character-defining features of these properties as people propose changes over the years. But when the time comes, or the fate falls on the wrong side, and someone proposes to demolish that property, we're not going to be able to. we're not going to be able to save it as, or not save it necessarily, we're not going to be able to require an EIR for that demolition. So we're going to be able to move forward approving the demolition. So 6L's get protected, a higher level of protection through our design review policies up to the point that someone proposes to demolish it, which gives them a longer shelf life. And overall, a lot of them will last for a long time. But yeah, we could certainly get that breakdown and bring it to you for the January hearing, and-
I guess my only other comment would be that I'm, I'm a little hesitant for 6L designations, only recognizing the development pressures in our city at this time. I don't know how much protection they really warrant to our resources, and I think especially for the resources we have prior to 1918, you know.
All I can say is that a historic survey cannot just say every property built before a certain date is historic. That's an inventory, not a survey.
Right.
A survey has to discriminate beyond the, that kind of basic fact. And I appreciate, you know, I think we all appreciate, like, how miserable it is to lose some of these. Change is inevitable, we know that also, and we're here to manage change and do it in the best possible way. So if some of these properties that you feel, that you think should be elevated to a protected status through the 5 code, which of course isn't meaning it lasts forever, it just means we have an environmental review process we go through, do that, keeping in mind that, you know, we have, we, we want to apply a certain rigorous methodology to the study of those and putting them in, assigning them status codes.
So sorry, just to continue, and I don't mean to take the floor up completely.
All the time.
Now I just lost my train of thought. I mean, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't have all the information I probably want to have right now. I don't think we have simply just looked at every single property before 1918 and said, we want to consider this a resource.
Well, I thought you said, I thought I misheard you then, so.
Well, for the ones we're looking at.
Just the 41?
Right. I'm sure a lot of properties, I'm going to guess a number of properties prior to 1918 have already been-
Oh, sure, there, there are plenty.
Right, set aside by HRG.
One thing I should mention again that's important is that anything that isn't on the, the HRG list as either a 5, 6, 3, whatever, anything that is considered a 6Z, which is the low-level category, meaning not eligible for anything, we're not going to protect it in any way, that's pretty much everything else that isn't on the list. Ultimately, we're going to have a list of those also. So we'll be, people will be able to pull up information, say this property's a 6Z, this is a 5S3, and kind of see that right up front. But, so that means that yes, thousands of properties are going to be 6Z's.
So for me, of these seven that are in the category enclosed porches-
Can you tell me, is that, is that in this document?
Oh, sorry, I'm starting at the very beginning, so page two.
Page two, okay.
And following through page five.
Yeah, okay, I see, three, seven, yeah.
And so for me personally, 1, 2, 3, 4, the five items on page four and five, I, although I was able to visit several properties, I was not able to visit these five. But by looking at them and relying on the incredible amount of research that has been done by TGHS, I would like to think, say, that for me, at least those five, I could probably see a 5S3. They don't appear to me to be necessarily stock, or without a significant amount of detail or characteristics that we might consider important. Perhaps 405 Concord and 137 South Jackson, I could be willing to leave a 6L. However, I would be not, would not be opposed to making them 5S3 if my colleagues were to concur.
Well, originally, you had put a motion, I believe, that said all 41 properties would 5S3.
Well, right, so as we're talking this through, so I, that was my recommendation. So I guess I should stop talking and let, I should let, until Commissioner Shire disagreed, okay? And so now we're, you know, coming back around and sort of talking at least this section through, because that was the section you disagreed with.
Do you have others? Did you have other specific houses that you didn't think on the list that, of the 41 that you didn't?
Yes, I have, I have a few comments on the entire packet, so. That was my thought, and that, you know, that we could talk about each one briefly if there are discussions. But I also had one general question about the planning districts. In the planning districts, are they, are those given, or can they be given an individual code? Or how will we adopt those?
Planning districts don't exist, as Kathy mentioned. There's a concept out in preservation world of what's usually called a conservation district or a planning district. A lot of people think of it as historic district light. Some people, as I think I've told you this, some people have said, because of Glendale's design review policy, we are an entire city of historic district light, which isn't really true. What we would do is if, if we did a conservation district, we would have to draft an ordinance. First, council would have to ask us to draft an ordinance. We would then draft the ordinance, we would look at best practices in cities in the area, and probably around the country also, because they're not super common. And we would see what worked best for Glendale. What usually happens in conservation districts is we would protect things in a very similar way that we're talking about using 6L to protect them. We would protect siding, we would protect window opening sizes, we'd protect roof forms, we would protect the overall form of properties, potential additions would go to the back. So it would, it would kind of codify this 6L concept, but also identify neighborhoods that, that really do have this close but not quite aspect. And I think the diamond is a perfect example of that. Ultimately, the best tool to protect the diamond would be for everyone in the community to advocate for downzoning. If that neighborhood were downzoned to either R1 or R2, that would be, or I'm sorry, to R1 or, or 3050, that would be the tool that would best protect the neighborhood. Preservation is not always the best tool for this kind of stuff. If we do go forward with the planning district, we would, you know, there's a process, so it's going to be a long time. Just so everyone knows, talking with, with HRG about this, they're going to look at the diamond again specifically. Part of the reason they didn't assign 6L's to some things that sort of look obviously like they would be 6L's anywhere else, was because they kind of thought, okay, we're giving it this planning district. Thinking it through a little more, we realize, as everyone else I think here realizes, that's not really much protection for something that may happen maybe someday. So I think they're open, I'm certainly open to reevaluating that area, possibly other areas, to, to kind of boost the number of 6L's. I think they have looked pretty carefully at the area. They did look very carefully at it as a historic district, because there had been in-house talk that maybe it was a district, they couldn't make that finding. But, so I think there's, there's several options out there, and I think the easiest one, the most expedient one right now is to kind of boost the level of, the number of 6L's in that area.
Yeah, what would make sense to me, if Glendale, for instance, doesn't have a planning district classification, that why wouldn't each of these be given their own classification on their own merit, and then an overlay recommendation of a planning district?
Yeah, there's, there's no status code for planning district.
Right, so I'm saying, so ignore, ignore that, right? That would be a secondary layer saying, okay, we've identified these as 6L, 5S3, you know, each individual houses, and then suggest, now, we would also recommend that these could be a historic district, right, in the absence of a planning district. So at least they get classified accurately as part of the survey with some way that we recommend. I mean, some that we recognize.
Using historic district, did you, did I hear you say?
Well, what?
Well, I think the best, well, I think the only way we could do it is-
Potential, sort of, potential planning district, whatever you want to call it.
Well, yeah, well, we already have it identified as a potential planning district. And then within that potential planning district, we could identify all of the 5S3's, which there are a few, all of the 6L's, which I think that number will increase. The, the neighborhood feels, it's largely, and Patty can correct me, it's largely, it feels like a single-family neighborhood peppered with some multifamily buildings, none of which are too big or too horrible at this point. The zoning of the district is 2250, which for most of those lots would only allow two or three units already. The big, the big buildings are going to be built, if they're built, but there are a couple of proposals on the table right now along Brand Boulevard there. But the, in, the interior part of the neighborhood is somewhat protected by its existing zoning. If it were downzoned further, better protection. We can identify it as a planning district, and then we can re, you know, using the methodology of the survey, bring up the number of 6L's as, as realistically as possible. And I think that would achieve what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, having a classification, at least on each individual property that would give it that protection, in the absences of us recognizing planning district.
Okay. No.
Sorry. Okay, so that was anyway, my question on the planning districts, thank you.
Okay, so that's one, one piece of solid movement on this.
Does people agree with that approach?
Yeah, that's, I agree with that.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so.
Okay, any, any other comments on the enclosed porch composition siding? Does anyone want to weigh in on that?
The only I want to say is while we were talking, I, you asked how many craftsmen homes specifically were in the survey and all of that. So I just went to the original binder that we were given. I didn't get all the way through the list, but I, I stopped it at 45 craftsmens with 5S3 designations, and there were still a few pages to go. So there are a healthy number of craftsmen, I think, in the survey at 5S3.
Prior to 1918.
That I didn't check.
So that's-
Yeah, that, that'll be a pretty easy thing for us to pull and figure out for you guys.
Sorry, I missed that part of the, of the scope.
But you'll prepare that for January, so.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
Is that enough time?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to do.
Okay.
Think up the databases, so. I can't believe I just said.
No, what I mean is, I thought we were supposed to be coming to, what I mean is, we're supposed to be coming to some sort of finality tonight, weren't we?
No, no, no.
Well, final recommendations to him.
This is a long day no more. We have, we have a story that we're going to tell. We're going to hear from you in January.
Okay.
We're going to hear from you in February. That's, February is where we're kind of-
That's a cutoff, okay.
Yeah, well, the, the realistic cutoff to chain, make changes-
Yes.
That go into the draft EIR is tonight, so, all right.
Right, so that's important.
It's important that we give all of our comments tonight as much as possible so that it can give you the staff direction or HRG on any information we need to come up with, or-
Yeah, so-
Counting of things.
So a comment like the 6L boosting in the diamond, that's, I think, a fairly straightforward and easy thing to do. The comment about adding all 41, I'd rather hear from everyone before we go to that as a recommendation from the Commission, because I don't think professionally our consultant is going to be able to go there, and that's where we'll say, which ones are, they kind of on the fence, which ones are like a close call where they respect your opinion and the community's opinion? Not that they don't on the others, but that they just can't come to a point where they, with a straight face, can say that's a resource.
And to be clear, these 41 have already been sent to HRG. They were part of the original presentation from TGHS, right?
Yeah, I think this is a distillation of the original group that TGHS-
Well, and HRG has, has added quite a few from TGHS's initial request, or upgraded or changed. So these are just the few remaining ones that TGHS has, is still challenging, or wants to recommend the upgrade or add it. Well, do you guys mind if we just fly through these pages? And just at least give Jay some direction on each one if we're-
I'm ready for a straw poll, if that's where we're going.
Okay, so, so page seven is 225 East Broadway. That's HRG has it as 3CS.
Yeah.
So no, sorry, so what are, what are we doing with-
Yeah, let me, let me try to, if I, if you can give me a second, I can pull this up so the public can see this also.
Okay.
And, um, now you'll see my ineptitude doing this kind of stuff.
Not at all.
There we go. Oops, wrong one. Okay. So we don't know how to make this full screen. Anyone, is that good enough?
Yeah, but, okay.
Say that?
You'll see up in the corner, two arrows in opposing-
There we go. Thank you, not that much better. Okay, so we will move to page seven.
I think we need to finish with the, the enclosed porches and the siding first.
Okay, and I can, any, any, I can guarantee that any, any recommendations for other, for, for these not being, three, I'm sorry, for these not being 6L's, is, is going to go into the category of we're not changing it for the next round, but we'll keep it on the list of possible, you know, just so that council has a record that you are stating that the Commission believes this. And I don't know exactly how we're going to get consensus, because we're not expecting a vote tonight, but I think an informal kind of consensus from the dais will be the way we should move forward.
So all, all these, page three, four, and five are 6L's currently?
I, I believe so, I'm not gonna-
That's not a question, that's a statement, sorry.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I like statements, they're so easy. Okay, so we have these two.
So they have that, they have that special consideration currently.
Right, and TGHS is asking that they be elevated to 5S3 consistent with HRG's methodology statement for the earliest buildings.
Yeah, and if I can, just, talking to HRG, they realize that there, there's a little bit of a misconception. It's going to seem like backtracking, but I don't believe at all that it is. But they were talking about early, early buildings, because it's very important, windows are also a very important aspect of craftsmen architecture. And craftsmen buildings have these, as we all know, beautiful multi-light windows in most cases for the early properties. When a property had its windows changed, TGHS is downgrading that, even if it's a pre-1919 property, partly because if someone came along and said, I want to restore this to its original appearance, we're going to say, we don't even know how to guide you on that unless you can find a photo of the house. We can just say some things may be appropriate, which isn't the best way to do, to work backwards historically. So, so, so when they were talking about this, they do, this, this house is even earlier than these two houses. And I think they are focusing on these truly early properties. And, and they're going to be working on making the methodology a little more clear ultimately, so.
Because it sounds like HRG gave more leeway to early properties.
Definitely.
With the exception of enclosed porches, they're, they're saying that's kind of the cutoff. Enclosed porches, if I read from theirs, replacement of wall cladding, enclosed porches, alterations to window openings, and replacement of all windows are generally not acceptable alterations. So although they gave more leniency to the early ones, those were really, they, they had to draw the line somewhere, and-
That's generally-
Preservation, yeah, would say.
Yeah.
And we don't necessarily have to agree with that methodology.
Oh, no, no.
No, not at all.
No, I'm, I'm hearing that you may not agree with that methodology. What, what I'm presenting is, this is kind of standard for reviews of these property types, so.
Hey, I understand that, but it says, because of the increasing rarity of, of early buildings, 1918 or earlier in South Glendale, and that a greater degree of alteration may be permissible. And in my thing, this is an alteration and it is permissible for enclosed porches, for these seven properties.
So can, can you just report to them, there's mixed viewpoints still on-
Yeah.
-enclosed porches and covers and siding. There's not unanimous decision.
Actually, Jay, I think you said something that, did I hear you say that HRG is going to be changing, revisiting their methodology, and is this something that's-
They're going to be clarifying, you know, you have to believe me on this, because I believe them on this. It's, it's not based on any of this, it's, it wasn't their intent to, you know, and I shouldn't even be saying this because I can't speak for them. This is part of a discussion we had pretty quickly earlier yesterday, yesterday, I guess. And, and take it with a grain of salt, or don't take it at all, that's fine. But, but when they were talking about alterations, they certainly weren't thinking about window replacements and enclosed porches, particularly enclosed porches and siding changes. So those are the two deal breakers. I think we'll see that there are some altered windows, but maybe they're focusing on front windows. I think we'll see that there are some altered windows, but maybe they're focusing on front windows not being altered, side windows being acceptable as alterations, that sort of thing. The, the goal here is to really make something that's a historic property in Glendale look pretty close to its original appearance, given that things change over time. And the hope is that those changes occur more toward the back of the house, more toward the sides of the house, and less toward the front of the house. So there's that kind of hierarchy in how we look at it.
Sorry, I, I might, don't mean to belabor the point, and I might be missing something, but, and with all due respect, they've been consultants and done this a lot. So when we're saying a greater degree of alteration, what, and you can't speak for them, but what were they thinking and why they used the term?
I think what I just said, alterations to the sides might be more acceptable, certainly additions at the rear would be more acceptable on an early property. Alterations visible from the street that might not work for a post nineteen twenty property might be okay on a nineteen thirteen property. Windows, I think there's some reasonable flexibility, but, but I think my, my point about what, if these are historic resources and someone comes to me and says, I have to change these altered front windows, what should I do? I don't like the idea of on a historic resource telling someone, do something that looks kind of close to Craftsman. That doesn't make me feel good as a person reviewing these things and giving advice. I would much prefer to say, let's look at the designation report, let's look at the early photograph, let's, you know, figure this out and, and make it right. Because we're all ready to approve window change outs that match the original windows. So if someone came to me and said, I want to, because one of the arguments for including enclosed porches would be, well, if that enclosed porch were removed, wouldn't we then bring the house back to its earlier character? To which I say, yes, that's great. And when that person does remove the porch, we will entertain possibly even a Glendale Register application, maybe under Criterion Three, maybe under Criterion Five even. We designed Criterion Five specifically because we, which, Criterion Five, which is, it reflects the early heritage of Glendale, and that's what we call our incentive Criterion. And we designed that specifically because we have so many nice Craftsman that aren't eligible for the Register. And we wanted to give people the opportunity to protect those by getting the designation, getting the financial benefit of the Mills Act, and then possibly building a unit in the back or two units in the back, whatever the zoning allowed. So, you know, we're not saying that to be a five is pristine even for a nineteen fifty house. But, and for a nineteen thirteen house, we know, well, that much more time's elapsed and there are going to be some of these changes. But there's got to be something, telling us something about what this house was like in the past for us to be able to tell its story, so.
But if you, Lawrence, if you refer to the methodology from HRG on page five, TGHS has taken an excerpt from that paragraph, but not the whole paragraph. That's what I read. It explains a little more. It doesn't say necessarily what it is, it says what it, what it's not. So that these alterations would not be acceptable although a greater degree has been given. And that would be the replacement of wall cladding, porch enclosures, alterations to window openings or replacement. So that's how the, that's how that paragraph ends. It gives a little more clarity to the statement of, they've given greater, uh, what's the word? A greater degree of alterations or changes, but not, when it gets to this level, that's kind of the, the hierarchy.
Right.
Okay, so, sure.
Okay, so for, for these, for the issue of these seven, is it seven or five, seven properties we're looking at, we are going to say the commission, is it fair to say the commission, if you want to take a straw poll, I, I hear at least two commissioners who think those changes are not enough to make it not a five. I think the chair has said that they probably are too much for it to be a five, and I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I don't think that they're too much. I think that it's fine.
Okay.
I think they're fine.
Okay, so we have a majority of the commission supports changing that aspect of the methodology.
Okay, can we move on to page seven, which is two-two-five East Broadway?
Mm-hmm.
That is, HRG has it as a three C S.
Yeah.
Or is, is that, do we find that acceptable?
No. This property, the, this property was designed by W.A. Sarmiento, who also did the Glendale Federal Building on Brand Street, which I think we all know and love. When this building was originally built, this, where my arrow is here, where the, the kind of roof sign is rising above here, coming down, this, everything to the right of that line was the original building. The brick box that was attached to it in, I believe, nineteen seventy-one is not part of the Sarmiento design. And the reason they felt that this was locally significant because it connects us with the Glendale Federal Building, it's a, it's definitely a Sarmiento building. It's definitely a beautiful building that I love and I think many of us do. But to elevate it to California Register, this, what I would call an inappropriate addition that we would never approve if someone came to us, if this original Sarmiento were designated, and someone said, I want to put this big brick box right flush with the front facade next to it. So they, they felt that this was locally eligible because, you know, it's, it's Sarmiento and it's, it's, tells us part of that story. They didn't think it rose to the higher level because of this addition.
Okay, I'm confused because it said, HRG's classifying it as a three C F. That was, that was the statement.
Then, then I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
So we're good. That's what I'm saying. Are we all good with that? Can we just go to the next?
Why am I going on? I thought we were talking about National Register. Is it different than what I have in front of me?
Well, no, the, the.
No, no.
You have to read it from what you have.
Well, you know, there's a lot going on here, but thank you. So, so it is not eligible for the National Register. I'm not sure if anyone, well.
Maybe they can just check that because it looks like on, it looks like in, on the spreadsheet that the HRG status code is.
I got it. Okay, so there's just confusion.
Yeah, so we, I think I'm fine with that. Everyone's.
I'm, I'm actually not sure that, I'm not sure that HRG thinks it's eligible for California.
Okay, so maybe you can just check the status code?
Yeah.
Okay.
Either way, we think it's, I mean, I think, is the consensus here that it would be five S three?
Oh, everyone agrees on that.
Oh.
That's, that's not an issue, so. I hope.
Well, I mean, if they didn't market that way, was that the conversation you'll have with them? But they'd look at it and go, oh yeah, we didn't mean to market anything. Uh, well, that's the conversation you'll have, is what I'm getting at.
I got you.
Thank you.
Okay, so page eight, we have five oh-one East Broadway, Streamline Modern. This one is a six Z according to HRG. This is the Dunn Edwards, or currently Dunn Edwards.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in support of it being a five S three.
Two.
So.
Two.
Yeah.
On this one, I would support a six L.
So four, five S threes, it's a very interesting process, but I didn't know how we do this, and here we are.
It seems to be the easiest one.
At six L. I think the issue here, and I, you know, jumping ahead thinking streamlined modern, I, I personally agree that the American Meta Seal Building is a very interesting example of streamlined modern, and I'm going to advocate with HRG to raise that. Both HRG and me are on the fence on this one. So this is the kind of situation where the four-one vote from the commission will, I think, elevate it in the current round of changes to the five S three. Just to share why, you know, there's, there's an issue. Glendale may never have had a lot of great streamlined modern buildings. The fact that we only have a few doesn't mean we have to say which of those few lesser buildings is the best and therefore eligible for the Register. So that's kind of a baseline. This one, to me, is a very awkwardly proportioned building, so let's move on to it. It, it, you know, the, the key features of the style are sleek, this automobile kind of movement, speed, horizontality. These little openings in the context of this raised canopy and these canted glass windows, these proportions are inelegant, and this is a very elegant style. The design of this, you know, sign ban, sign, uh, post here, a little clunky in my opinion, rather than the streamlined look that you would expect with a curve rather than this angle. It's, to me, not a great example of the style, and it's a lesser example of the style compared to the American Meta Seal Building, which I think is pretty fantastic. And I'd never even noticed until it was brought to our attention by the Historical Society. So that, that was pretty fun to see. But, but like I said, if, if that doesn't change anyone's opinion, we'll, we'll raise this and.
Yes.
Anyone feel differently? Okay, page nine, it's one-two-one West California, The Great White Hut. It is currently five S three, which is, I find acceptable.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
You good?
Okay.
Okay, page ten, two-two-zero East Colorado. This is the mid-century modern California National Guard Armory. Oh, can you change your slide, Jay?
Yeah.
And this is currently six Z.
Yeah, speaking with HRG, they were having trouble finding any real significance architecturally here. And we don't have enough to, to give it, to give it a level of significance as an example of National Guard Armories in California, if we just focused on the state, would require a lot more information than we have here. They look at this as it, it's, it's very intact. It's had, it's got its original windows, the brick patterns are intact. So they look at this as, you know, talking to me, I kind of gave it a boost, and they're ready to call it a six L right now.
Oh, I recognize six L.
But they're, they're not ready for five S three, so.
I support six L.
Group support or not?
I didn't, I didn't drive by this one. I see it all the time, but I really didn't drive by this one, so I don't, I don't feel comfortable coming in.
Six L for sure.
Yeah, six L for sure.
I want it so higher.
Okay, and there's still room as we go forward to, you know.
There's room to do some research too, by us and the commission or others, if.
Yeah, if, if we had greater research to say that this armory has some role in the history of the National Guard, or it's the first of its type, or something that gives it a little boost, that would be great.
Okay, page eleven is three-sixteen West Acacia. This is currently six L.
And this, this one, HRG is going to go back and double, should, they're going to compare this to the others. This, this could have just fallen through a crack. It's, it's not, you know, the most exempl, amazing piece of architecture, but it does look like it fits the methodology, yeah, so.
Yeah, I could go five S three.
There's a good chance this will go to five S three, so.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tonight, more than ever, I need an assistant.
No.
Have one.
Well, it's not on TVs. It's not that big of a, they're all showing up.
Oh, there we are.
Okay, so page twelve, four oh-seven.
Well, I think tonight we have, tonight we have to thank our intrepid people at GTV six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because they are, tonight is the city's holiday party, and they didn't learn early enough that this meeting was a special meeting. And they're doing kind of super duty, so.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We rarely acknowledge the men behind, the men and women behind the machinery, but.
Okay, so this one is six Z.
It goes till midnight.
This is, this is six Z.
Let's wrap it up.
Due to substantially altered.
Yeah. HRG feels this, this is so altered, it's way beyond something we should even be thinking about.
I would agree with that.
Nope.
Anyone else?
Do we know what the alterations are?
Yeah, I didn't.
Sorry.
They think there are alterations at the second floor. This may or may not have been an airplane bungalow, but no airplane bungalow I've ever seen has a second floor that comes this close to the front and has the proportions of this. I actually do not remember the others. It looks like there may be an addition on the right side. I'm sorry, let's. It's a prob, possibly when it was converted into a duplex, which may have led to the enlargement of the, enlargement of the second floor. So let me just make notes at seven eighteen.
Yeah, on their, on their notes, it says include significant alterations to the primary facade. That's what it expresses currently.
Yeah, just, just looking at it, I, I feel strongly that this is
Really?
major alterations and, and HRG is, this is one of their more adamant opinions, I would say.
I mean, I, I mean, if they're very adamant, I guess I'll have to go along with that.
But you.
Not being an expert.
You could ask, you could ask for them to, you know, and one thing that's going to happen is their comments as we go through this process are going to be embell, added to so that their opinions are memorialized in the final product. You know, they're doing a good job of that now, but if they didn't specifically call out the alterations here, they might be able to do that in the final document, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused about how it could have been, I mean, how all of that could have been missed in the Craftsman survey of two thousand and seven.
Craftsman survey was a volunteer survey. We don't know who was the surveyor on the ground at the time that this was looked at. I, I, I don't want to say that the Craftsman survey isn't a survey that was prepared by a firm that's very reputable, but I can see how something like that would be missed. And I can see how a lot of people would miss it because it's, it's well-kept.
It is. It's a very nice house.
It's an orange house on Naranja. You know, I don't know if that adds to it or not.
Orange.
An orange. But it, you know, all, all I can say is through, through doing the crafts, through doing Survey LA, all of the local survey firms have gained much more experience than they had before they did Survey LA because it was so intensive, and LA's full of Craftsman neighborhoods. You know, and I feel pretty comfortable saying that this, this is a fairly deeply altered property. So, you know, we can, I'll take notes however you like, but.
Okay.
I'm still with the five S three. I didn't see the alterations. I was on the property and I walked all around it, much of the chagrin of the people that were living there. So.
Have you ever seen an original Craftsman duplex?
I have never, no.
On a little bump out on the side, the way this one has?
Nope, I have not. And unfortunately, I, I didn't take a picture of the bump out sadly. I only took it from roughly the same angle that was taken, so I can't show the bump out on this one.
I think I feel comfortable going with your expertise, but it would be helpful if HRG could sort of call out some of the alterations.
Okay, noted.
Okay, next, page fourteen, we have the addresses on Commercial, five fourteen, five twenty, five twenty-six. And this is for the Merrill Baird Architect affiliation. Currently, it is a six L. I would feel comfortable taking this to a five S three.
Well, these are four buildings.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, the next page.
One of which, oh, okay, well, then skipping Commercial Street on page fourteen.
No.
No, all on fourteen.
I'm sorry, there, but there is one around the corner, right?
Not pictured right.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, these are, these are the Merrill Baird and the one on San Fernando's.
Oh, Milford, here we go.
Yeah. Yeah, there's one on Milford, which we don't show here. One on Milford, I, I believe, me, HRG, the Historical Society, we all agree. Most, most of the staff here loves the building private, so we're comfortable with five S three.
Okay.
HRG did look at this as a potential district. They didn't feel that it was enough there to talk about. Their, their concern is that it doesn't really convey much about Glendale's industrial heritage. It's just a group of surviving buildings that happen to be contiguous. They did appreciate them enough to go with the six L designation for the other three buildings, which gives some protection to the grouping. They didn't feel that this rose to the level of district, and they did think about it at least, so.
Would you want to take the feedback back to them and see what they think of?
Yeah, we're all in agreement with that, so.
Five S three.
Yeah, five S three for all of them. That's what we're saying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, but not a district?
Well, yeah, I mean, I would.
Well, there's a, there's a big difference because the district allows buildings to be lesser specimens of their type and, and to hang together through their historical connections. If we're saying five S three, we're saying if the building on the corner never existed, we're saying that each of these other three buildings is individually eligible for designation.
Well, let's just say the commission is open to either one, whatever HRG would, would be willing to raise it to the level of, I mean, I think we should get as much protection as we can, whatever.
So are we saying historic district would give it more protection? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, no, five S three would give it the most protection.
But that's.
HRG didn't think that the three buildings rose to that level, and they also didn't think the four buildings represented a district.
Are they considering history in that? Are they really just considering architecture? Do you know?
Um, well, I think they're considering historical development. They're looking at this, this isn't like a historical district that, it is, it's owned for, for industrial. But there's, there's not a broader area for them to look at. They may ultimately, I, I don't know, but they may find some historic districts in West Glendale in, in the industrial areas there. I can't say that they will, but that's, that's where we have areas that are large sections of the city that were built as industrial buildings. All I can say here is, you know, I'll bring it back to them as either you recommend it as a district or as four or five S three properties.
Yeah.
But with the caveat that I personally can't make a strong statement that the other three buildings really rise to the level of. that the other three buildings really rise to the level of five if we take them individually, which is what you're supposed to do for that, so.
I see what you're saying.
Okay. Five S three or a district.
Page fifteen, forty-five hundred San Fernando Road. This is an LH Wilson developer, a commercial.
Right.
Oh, you can.
Yeah, the slated for demolition is incorrect. Thanks for reminding, keep reminding me of that because I'm gonna lose it otherwise. HRG's gonna revisit the Wilsons and look at this one specifically.
Okay.
I think Mr. Bressel, was it Sean who said this? That this is the earliest of the Wilsons?
Yeah.
We recognize that all of the Wilsons have been substantially altered. I find that this one is the best of the remaining ones. We unfortunately have lost the best of the Wilsons. Part of the reason HRG had a problem with some of these was the Wilson connection isn't strong, so we'd probably look at this more as architecture. The Wilson connection was very strong to the building that was lost because not only did he develop it and it was a very interesting building architecturally, but his office was there. So it was really a Wilson-focused site. These were kind of development projects. One of the things that distinguishes this is the glazed brick kind of bands and trim that, that give it a little architectural character. And HRG may ultimately look, bring Wilson into that picture.
Okay.
So, but they're gonna revisit all of those.
That sounds great. Page sixteen is two-three-one North Everett. And this one says HRG seven R, so I was questioning this and the next one. Are they still researching that?
They were, that's why they gave it the seven R. These, these status codes are now a few months old.
Okay.
So they gave it a seven R so that they could give it a little more research. They have, and, and I apologize to TGHS, which I know has a passion for this site. No one doubts that the Byram House is significant. These properties are associated not with Mr. Byram, who is significant in the history of Glendale, but with his children, who we know nothing about and can't say that they're significant. The fact that wealthy families give their children properties and subdivide and do real estate work in general isn't enough to elevate something to a historic level. So HRG feels strongly that the associative value isn't strong here at all. And then also the architecture is, isn't strong enough as, as post nineteen twenty properties.
So are these, these are currently six L then?
I believe they gave them six Ls. Oh, no, there were seven Rs. Oh, there were six Ls in the Craftsman survey. I think they're, they're ready to give them. I think they're ready to give them six Ls. What I've, what I'm saying in a long-winded way is I don't think they, HRG doesn't think they rise to a five level.
Okay, what does the commission think on those, just for feedback?
I just think they're an important group of early properties associated with, you know, important pioneers, for lack of a better word, in the early development of Glendale.
That pioneer was dead by quite a few years before these were built.
Is that the challenge, like he never truly owned them or built them?
To say there's, unless we can talk about the Byram children who built these houses as significant, not just by being born to Byram, but doing something in the history of Glendale, it's hard to make the associative connection.
Was it the house?
I understand the impulse to, of course, but.
Was it the house to the south in the photograph?
That's the Byram House.
That's the original Byram.
This is the original Byram House. And these are the two on either side.
Yeah. I can't, I can't remember, they gave that at least a five and probably higher. And we've, that's been on our radar for years as an important building.
No, but if they're developed.
It's a grouping of properties though, that relate to the family and their early property.
There's, there's nothing in our criteria to talk about groupings except for historic districts.
Got it.
And that would be hard to justify here, I think.
Even a district would be hard to justify?
A, a five-property district on one side of the street, you know.
There's a huge building.
We don't have, we do not have a rule. We could have a two-property district theoretically, but I'm not gonna be necessarily advocating for two-property districts. It's, it's tough to look at this as a district.
And it's on either side.
All right.
You know.
So further research. Further research could help us change this code in the next month or two if we.
Right, if that comes from the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So what are you putting it?
Well, you think they're already gonna go six L.
He's gonna go back and check and he's gonna make sure what the classification is.
So we, no classification at this time?
Well, I, I, I think, I think HRG was ready to call these six Ls. I'm gonna double-check with them. They left it a seven R because they wanted to look into the Byram connection and, and they've done Sanborn research on these, they've done permit research on these, and they've looked into the family history and they can't find anything significant about the children of Byram, except that these houses happen to have been built. We don't even know if they lived in these houses. They may have just been built as spec development to enrich.
AD use.
What's that? They may have been early AD use, exactly.
Maybe we could tap into the speaker earlier to do some more research on the kids.
So.
Okay, so you'll go back and confirm.
Yeah, but what's HPC's ultimate?
Well, minimum six L.
Yeah, minimum six L.
Five S three.
Okay.
One five S three.
We, we already have one.
Five S three.
Well, we already have one for five S three. It's just the two little bungalows.
No, he's, no, he means five S three for the group.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, one boat for the.
For the individual buildings.
I mean, if we can, I'm gonna give it a five S three, too.
Okay, and I think, I don't know how we can speed this up. I'm gonna try to speak more quiet, more quickly.
Okay, well, I'll try to go more quickly.
Yeah.
Sixty, six forty-one east Harvard.
Slide.
This is six L and this was in association with Herman Nelson.
This is my personal heartbreak.
I could do five S three.
I love this house. This has asbestos siding.
Oh, that's the.
That's the, that's the deal-breaker here. The associative value, I have said this too many times over the years and it always sounds sad, but successful business people do not necessarily make historic people unless we can prove that that person really did something to change the course of Glendale history. If Mr. Herman Nelson.
Nelson.
Were the first president of the bank who founded it, who was instrumental in its development, I think that would be a no-brainer. As a member of the board who served in various roles, what HP, which HRG said is if the community can come back with a stronger argument for Nelson, that would be a great way to elevate a house that has compromised physical issues. And I would certainly love to see that happen, but the evidence that we have right now isn't enough. So if, if people wanna go back and, and pull a stronger story, I, I think everyone would be excited to make this a five, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we go to twenty-one and that is seven oh one west Broadway. This is the American Metasil Building.
Sorry, can I back up for a minute? And I might just be having a brain cramp here right now. But if we're saying five S three, we're saying it's eligible, it's potentially eligible for local designation.
Yes, but we're also affecting people's ability to use, not to use, but to develop their site and possibly affecting other aspects of it. Because under Sequo, once we say it's a five, we're telling people you can't make these changes that are gonna affect character-defining features if they're enough to lose its eligibility. We're telling people if you wanna demolish this property, that you have to go through an EIR, which can take considerable time and money to do. So I think we have to be careful. You know, I'm not saying to not give things five S three, but I think we have to really be justified in our reasons for doing that because we are affecting the lives of property owners, so.
So you're, you're saying doing more research would help us justify the five S three?
I, I think, if, if, if this house had its original siding, it would be a clear five S three. It's a fantastic house. But it's also important to, to apply a methodology strictly because otherwise, where, where does that slope stop, so? Okay.
Ready to move on?
The Metasil Building.
Okay, so American Metasil. I think we agree it would be a five S three.
Yeah, I think we're all prepared for that, so.
Okay. The next page, we have five twenty-five west Garfield. This is a Quonset hut nineteen forty.
Yeah, HRG, we, HRG has, we have two Quonset huts that we know of in South Glendale. One is plainly visible from the street as a Quonset and is already identified as a five. HRG has a lot of trouble with this one because of the stucco box at the front and feels that we, we have a Quonset hut. It maybe, maybe it's buried in there, but it's in there, so.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
As much as I love that.
Yeah, this was a tough one.
We can't see the front arc, I know.
It was a tough one for me.
Okay, and, and we're, and it's a six L, so it'll have some.
Some protection. Okay, so then we have.
Preserve that stucco box as best we can.
So page twenty, twenty-three, we have three nine oh one San Fernando Road, Streamline Modern. It is currently a six L.
This one, HRG and Jay Platt both think a six L is as high as we can go. As, you know, and I get, I get why this building looks like something and in some ways the sign may be more important than the building and we don't designate for signs. But this, this is a hodgepodge of brick patterns, textures and colors that is completely at odds with the Streamline Modern concept. And I have no idea if this was changed over the years because these changes in brick pattern on a building like this suggest changes. And if it was built this way, it was built by someone who didn't get Streamline Modern conceptually. And, you know, we have the cool rounded corner and we have the glass block and we have the canopy, but we don't have, and the steel windows and we don't have much else. All of those things could be protected through six L to a large degree. But in a site like this, this is a small building on a large site. If, you know, as a development site, it's probably desirable. But HRG and, and, and I can't kind of get our heads around a five for this.
I'm on the fence. You're on the fence, six L, yeah. Keep, keep six L at least.
Six L is okay.
Okay, and then change your slide when you have time. Okay, so now we're page twenty-five, we have three oh eight north Adams. This is currently six L. This is English Revival duplex.
Yeah, this is a property that HRG originally gave a six Z. After reviewing the TGHS information, they raised it to six L. They don't, they don't see anything about this that puts it in the five category.
So TGHS is considering it an extremely rare type. No other English or Tudor Revival duplexes are identified in the survey and there are no known alterations.
But there are several Tudor Revival houses that are identified and Kiefer and Irick obviously is in the survey and now is clearly identified. There's a point where you're like, do we have to have a Tudor Revival duplex then? Do we have to have a Tudor Revival triplex then, a Tudor Revival apartment building? And then, you know, the list goes on. It's hard to say that we have to preserve like Noah's Ark, whatever specimen of whatever type that we have left.
So what is the challenge with this one?
The challenge is TGHS thinks this should be five S three.
No, no, I'm sorry.
HRG.
Why does HRG not like it?
Backwards.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Because they don't think it's, it's an example of much of anything. As a Tudor Revival, it's modest. As a duplex, that doesn't add to any interest specifically for the reason I just said. But they think six L because it does, it is intact, it is cute, has some nice features. That's where they were coming in.
Built in nineteen twenty-six.
So they don't think it's necessarily specifically a Tudor, a really great Tudor example, is what they're saying?
Yeah.
TGHS, it's the only one.
Well, I mean, I, I get that it's the only one, but I'm kind of like, I don't necessarily think that just because something is the only one of something, that it needs to be.
And we also have to think that this, we're only looking at South Glendale here. There are some types that are in here that are well-represented in other parts of the city. I can't say the Tudor duplexes are, it's probably a rare concept in general.
There's one in Sporthides.
What's that?
There's one in Sporthides.
Yeah, there's one right across from that site on Buena Vista. So, is it Buena Vista?
No, it's down off Sunview.
Well, there is the development across the street, yeah, that's it.
I'm okay with it.
And, and that, that is an exceptional Tudor Revival duplex, I would say. So there may be others throughout the city.
I mean, it's very cute, but I can understand if, if the experts don't think that it's a fitting of the style or representative fully of the style, then it's kinda hard to argue.
So is that a consensus or not?
No, I'm going still with five S three because it's extreme rare, extreme rarity of the time.
Okay, next page, twenty-six.
That's page twenty-five.
Page twenty-five.
Oh, two and two.
It was two-two.
Okay, eight, eight fifteen east door, we have Streamline Modern duplex. I'm not sure currently what the HRG code is, it didn't seem to be clear here.
Yeah. Yeah, they saw this as a historic district contributor, they identified a district here.
A historic district.
That's why it's missing its own code.
Yeah, so, but instead of five B, TGHS has five B means historic district eligible, a potential historic district contributor in, and potential individually eligible property.
Well, that's a, I don't.
It's a five S three, to get technical, it's a five S three plus a five D three equals a five B.
And you said that's something that.
So you're saying HRG?
HRG saw it as a, as a contributor and they've identified a district in this area and they see this as a contributor and they felt that was the highest level of protection that they saw for it. Of course, a district doesn't happen until people from that district propose it.
So it doesn't give it a five S three by default?
No, no, no.
Doesn't give it by default?
No, it gives it a five D three as a district contributor, so. And I don't think anyone, if, if, you know, this isn't a great example, but it has a lot of nice features. It's got steel windows, it's got the pipe rails, it's got the curved, curved cornice, the windows on the curved bay. So I think this is one of these borderlines, depending on where you go, I think.
So it would be important to those that are identified as historic districts to try to get those going quickly.
Yeah, there's, there's still Sequo protection for five D three properties.
Okay.
But not, you know, I, I think a five.
That helps.
It, it could help, yeah.
I'm for a five S three on that one. On the, on Doran.
So.
I mean, I think if they think it's a contributor for the district, I think it.
Well, no, but we have to remember, the reason historic districts exist is because most properties in districts aren't individually eligible. But we do districts because we can capture the feel of an entire group of buildings. But five S threes are rare in historic districts. They're not the norm, although on Royal Boulevard, they're becoming the norm strangely, but that's really a special street, so.
So this would be flagged or coded in as a five D three.
This would be coded, yeah, this is flagged as a five, which gives it Sequo protection.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
So we're okay with five D three?
Yeah.
Okay, page twenty-seven, this is one one-nine east Garfield, minimal traditional triplex. It is currently six L.
And this is similar to the, the little Tudor we just looked at. HRG can't really come to this as, as an individual resource. TGHS rightly says that HRG acknowledged that there are other better examples in the city when North Glendale gets surveyed, and I think there are some of these on Glen Oaks also. There are groupings of these actually and some very nice examples. The fact that this is one of these and, I, I have to say, in general, the survey went out of its way. We've identified a lot of, a lot more multifamily buildings than I would have expected from the survey and I think it's a good thing. And given that they've been pretty open to this, the type duplexes, courtyards and larger apartment buildings, this one didn't kind of fit for them, but they're giving it a six L.
I, I agree with six L.
I didn't see it.
I didn't get to visit the property.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I agree with the six L.
Okay, and you have time again to look at it again, to visit places and.
Okay, the next one is two-four-three, can you do your slides, too? Two-four-three north Isabel, this is contemporary dingbat. It is currently six Z.
Yeah, so you mentioned that they didn't, someone mentioned that, that HRG just doesn't think this is a good example of dingbat?
Yeah, there, HRG's identified two buildings that were brought to us from TGHS that we looked at and said, wow. Those were identified as neo-formalist, which is a very rare style. The building we're in is partially neo-formalist, it's not, but they're really dingbats. They're, I would call them neo-formalist dingbats in a way. So there are two buildings with the dingbat typology that we have identified, but they're not pure dingbats. This is not a great example of a dingbat by any means. It's, it's the situation where it's one of the, it's one of the best of what we have. Glendale, you know, this, this building really has, you know, some wood siding and some brick and, and the rest of it. And dingbats are that, but in general, the best dingbats have a street facade that gives you the dingbat quality. And I love the people who have no idea what we're talking about are like, oh, what's going on here? If they're not a.
They think we're talking.
But the, but the fact that the, the street presence of this building is really stucco box on stilts and then right at the corner, we have this nice little feature, which I agree is nice and it's got a cool sign on it. But this is where the, HRG doesn't wanna elevate lesser examples just because we don't have many others. And I think that they, oh, they said six Z on this one, so.
Minimum six L, but five S three? No.
It's tough. I, I, I just, I can't, I don't have enough experience to know whether or not something is architecturally correct, to be honest.
Well, you mean in dingbat style.
In dingbat style, yeah. So I mean, I have a hard time doing that. I have a hard time doing anything more than a six L.
Yeah.
So Mike is a six L?
Yeah, I would go with a six L.
Okay, the, the funny thing with six L for a building like this, and this is, I don't want to, those aluminum windows fail all the time. And it would be really, really hard, and they do not make those windows anymore. Could not find a replacement window that would keep that look. And new window, new, the current window guidelines that we have citywide for any window replacement would call for what we call modified Z bar to go into these, where we cut the wide piece of the Z bar off and we insert it into that opening. But we go from having maybe a three-quarter inch metal frame around the perimeter to having a two and a half inch vinyl often frame around the perimeter. And it's, it's just, to preserve these windows is, is kind of a battle that I don't even think we can fight. It would be really hard and expensive. If we called it a six L, that would be the kind of thing we did, unless the commission said, well, really what we care about is the wood and the sign and the brick, knowing that windows ultimately may get replaced, which is going to be, we'd have to memorialize that in a way in our system that would make sense. But, but otherwise, it would be hard to keep the exact character you look at today. If there's, and the, just to, if this, the better examples of dingbats have very few windows on the street facade. And, and then they tend to have their long facades running down the length of the lot, where we don't really care as much about, you know, whether those are Z bar windows or not. It doesn't read from the street so, so much, so.
Well, my, my concern is, you know, they're kind of challenging. HRG should identify superior examples of the style in Glendale. If this one does not qualify as a good example, so.
Well, and I think we have these neo-formalist buildings that have the, they have the full dingbat typology, stucco box, tuck under parking with an interesting facade treatment. They just don't quite have the, the little starburst googie thing happening. They've got something else happening. But it's, this doesn't, this doesn't have the starburst googie thing either, so.
It does not.
You know, I, I like these buildings a lot, but it's hard for me to see it.
Okay, are we ready to?
So you're saying if you gave it a six L?
It might be challenge, it might be unrealistic.
I just want you to keep in mind, because these, these status codes have meaning in terms of how owners have to treat their buildings and how we have to regulate treatment. And, and it just, you'd have to know that these windows were going to change dramatically at some point, so, not too far away, so.
All right, so what are we saying?
Are you leaving that as a six E? I'm not sure.
People okay? Six E?
I mean, look, this is the type of feedback we need, practical, experienced feedback. So if, I mean, if six L is going to be a challenge, you know.
Yeah, and I, I don't say that, I don't say that for any other window type. It's just I know this window type, there's no way we can keep it.
Well, I would, I would have to agree, this is not one of the best in dingbat style. And it, you know, just because it might be the few, few that we have, do you really raise me to the level of that? So I'm fine with it's six Z.
Six Z, I'm fine.
So just to understand, as a six Z, if the owners came in and the windows needed to be changed out, they wouldn't be putting in a modified Z bar?
No, they would be. We would, we would do, our current rules, all of these street-facing windows would get a modified Z bar. On the side facades, where you just have a blank stucco wall, we would allow the full Z bar under our current rules, which generally.
Which would detract from the building, is what we're saying. Like, it, it will just change.
No, I'm saying if this were a six L, window replacements at the street would be very different from what you see now. But we would do the modified Z bar, which is better than the full-blown Z bar, which we do allow on the side facades when there's no architectural detail. And it's just a straight shot, stucco wall on a box, basically. We allow the Z bar for multifamily.
As six L, it would be the modified Z bar?
No, as, as six Z, it would be the modified.
Oh, and as six L.
Our current citywide window replacement policies, we do design review on every property in the city, so.
Understood.
Yes, I know.
No, no.
But our, our current policy would be modified Z bar facing the street, regular Z bar on the sides and the back, if they're not prominent and have no architectural features.
And forgive me if I'm being a brick right now, but six Z, that's what you just described, six L, what happens to the windows?
Six L, same thing. Because ordinarily, ordinarily, if this were a six L, that we were trying to protect the historic character, we would want to get narrow-framed aluminum windows to replace the old narrow-framed windows. Those don't exist. So any, any, any window that we install now is going to have a frame that's got a heavier profile than these very thin windows. And it's, it's a character change. It changes the way the building looks. It's, it's not huge, but, but it's definitely a change, so.
Let's quickly come to a final one, then we're going to move on. Six L, six Z, so.
Yeah, I was confused by the previous description. I'm okay with a six L on that one.
Okay, but we're going to get the same windows.
That's fine, but it also protects everything else, the brick and the wood and all that other stuff you said, right?
Okay, that's fine.
And if someone wants to demo it, it gets special.
Either way, six Z or six L.
Yeah, either way it does. Okay, so twenty-nine.
So what do we have for the six L? All of us?
So page twenty-nine, let's move forward. Two three one and two three five North Kenwood. This is a minimal traditional with French Revival influence. These are apartments. It's currently six L.
Yeah, HRG found a tremendous num, oh, I'm sorry. HRG found a lot of these garden-type apartments that were identified as fives. And TGHS is right that the, the fence in the front is totally reversible. We do question, you know, as French Revivals go, this is a French Revival super light, because it has coins. And I don't know what else is French Revival here, besides maybe the hip roof, but that's on a million kinds of buildings. So this is really a minimal traditional, and if you want to say French Revival, fine, but it doesn't really have much. That doesn't make it special compared, we, there are so many of this type on the list that HRG found better, that they just didn't see this one rising.
I'm fine with that. Anyone else?
And they're giving it a six L.
Yeah.
Okay, six L. Okay, next is two three three North Louise. This is currently six Z. This is a minimal traditional apartment. You gotta change the slide when you have time.
I'm sorry. This is one where, you know, when we were talking about this, is this outstanding or exemplary? It has some cool features. The corner windows are great, the steel sash is great, the stairway is great. HRG, you know, talking to me, we kind of thought, well, I, you know, we're cool with six L. We think there are enough features here to protect. The little roof canopy over the deck is very awkward for this style, the way it can't stand like that. But, but there are differently interesting things here that might be worth protecting.
I'm good, six L.
Yeah, four zero.
No way. Moving.
Moving. Page thirty-two. We have one two one West Chevy Chase. This is a Craftsman from nineteen thirteen. It's currently six L due to alterations. Security bars, the door, front facade, a replacement of a window at the front facade. I, I agree with six L.
Okay, if you all agree, I won't even explain.
No, explain, because I don't agree.
Maybe change the slide.
Okay.
Wish I could help you over there with the clicker.
If you want, I can do it.
Actually. Thought of that a while ago. HRG, looking at this, this, this front bay is weird. Even if it's not an enclosed porch, it's weird. It doesn't feel quite right, but you can't base everything on that. It sort of does look like it might be an enclosed porch that they bumped out and did an interesting job fixing. They certainly don't downgrade buildings because of window bars, so don't think that that's part of their calculus on these. They're also concerned about the windows, but they want to look at it again a little more closely to look at the windows. So this is on their list for a revisit.
Okay.
Good.
Then next, we have three fifty.
Although they're, they're coming in thinking it's going to be a six L, so.
Yeah.
But we will revisit it.
You'll have the opportunity, yeah, but it's going, this, this, they'll do this research before we finalize what's going into the EIR. But the EIR will probably, well, we'll see what they say, but right now, they're, they're going six L, so.
Okay, three fifty West Duran Craftsman nineteen thirteen. This is currently six L. Noting that all windows of the front facade have been replaced. But we note that some, oh, so, sorry, some but not all of the front have been replaced.
With the original openings.
Yeah, you know, HRG is concerned about, about that, the window replacement here. I'm concerned about gravity, but I don't know if this photo distorts things or not. Does look very tenuous, but. It also has asbestos siding on it, so.
I'm okay with six L.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
The rest? Okay, so next one is two two three North Everett Craftsman duplex nineteen twenty-one. It's currently six L. Not distinctive in porch enclosure per Sanborn maps.
Yeah, they're, they're concerned about the porch enclosure.
Yes, me too.
Oh, that's my job. Oh, that's my job.
Come on, Chris, come on.
That's so engrossing in the conversation.
This is ridiculous.
The barn in back, oh my gosh.
The barn is still there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, they were, they were concerned about the porch enclosure, and then beyond that, they didn't see it as, as meeting the.
They didn't really look.
Post nineteen nineteen kind of five criterion, so they're ready with a six L.
This is the one to the left of the Byram House, right?
Um, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
That's right, I came the next.
But I don't think this is one of the ones in the Byram grouping.
No.
No.
I'm fine with six L.
Yeah, that's tough.
Go look at it.
I did.
It's, go look at the garage in back. Go look at, no.
So what do you feel it is, Mike?
Five S three, this is.
So it says TGHS is saying this is a rare early Craftsman, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well.
Multifamily development that should be added as five S three consistent with other Craftsman multifamilies identified.
So on that one, we had a split vote.
It's a two-two or three-one.
It's a three-one.
Just, just looking at it, the bump out.
Yeah.
Yes, two-two.
The bump out on the front facade to the right side of the door is extremely unusual for this typology. So I'm, you know, I haven't looked at this house closely, but it's definitely a funny change, but, so.
So it's two-two.
To go five S three? Or it's two-two now?
No, no, it's three-one.
I'm five S three.
I'm five S three.
Three-one for five S three.
Okay, next is, next is eighteen eighteen Gardena. This is currently six L.
Yeah, and this, this, like the, like the others in the diamond, they're going to look at these as, well, I guess if this is currently six L, that's maybe where they're going to leave it because of the alterations.
Is it the planning district?
No alterations that we know of, are the windows original? Okay, we will have them reevaluate this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if, if there haven't been any alterations, then it should be a five S three.
I say five S three.
Okay, next is eighteen thirty-two Gardena. This is planning.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I don't know.
Planning district consideration.
Well, we'll just, they're going to reevaluate it and take that into account.
Okay, so, can you move your slide? Eighteen thirty-two Gardena, this is currently planning district. So that's what I was asking about, classifications. Oh, no, we're on this one.
No, aren't we on eighteen thirteen? We were just on eighteen thirty-two. Now we're on eighteen eighteen?
Oh, no, I did eighteen eighteen.
Eighteen nineteen was the.
Oh, did I get these? My pages were flipped. Okay, sorry. Oh, so, so everything we just said was about eighteen eighteen.
Yes. Were your comments about eighteen eighteen or did you ever?
I was.
Respeak.
Well, I was reading, no, well, I was just thinking, they don't really, I didn't have any notes on eighteen thirty-two from them, because they're going to reevaluate the diamond, looking at six Ls and, and anything else.
Okay.
So, but for eighteen eighteen, the comments for eighteen eighteen were they think six L is appropriate. It was the same in the Craftsman survey. It's nineteen twenty-two. They don't see anything elevating this above the level of kind of regular Craftsman. But this is the one you said should be a five S three.
So they're not reevaluating that one? That was the comment for?
That is.
They're reevaluating all of them.
Yeah, that comment, yeah, was for the diamond housing.
Oh, okay.
Right, so that's all of them.
Okay, so now we can move.
But HPC says eighteen eighteen is five S three, eighteen thirty-two, same thing.
Nineteen seventeen.
That makes my notes easier.
Five S three.
We're, we're going five S three now.
Eighteen thirty-two.
Oh, here, here's my note that captures all of these diamond properties, that, that are pretty much all of the ones we've looked at.
Yes.
They're saying six L for, but they're going to kind of look at it more globally. This property has all of its windows replaced, and they felt that that was a deal breaker for the reasons we talked about before, where if someone comes and says, I want to replace these and make it more original, how do we deal with that as a historic resource when we don't even know what original was?
I thought when it was the, whether somewhere it was okay, depending on the age, or this was one of the cutoffs.
No, they, well, windows are one of the things that are kind of in flux in that. It's not as much of a deal breaker as far as I can speak for HRG as the, as the siding and the enclosed porch. But specifically this one, they're concerned about the windows, and it is cute. No one can deny it. No one can deny how cute it is.
Well, can you?
It's also pretty darn funky with that roof line.
Right, can you speak to that roof line? I mean, is that?
All I can say is, when you're doing this kind of work, you can't say that something weird isn't something original. So it doesn't, it doesn't look right, but I don't know what to say other than that, so.
It's a funky style.
Yeah, it's cool.
Okay, so are we moving forward?
Are they reevaluating it?
Well, no, they're, they're saying six L, so you can, they're, they're going to look at the diamond again, but I think all of the things that they said were in a planning district, we'll get a six L. But if you say that you think they're five S three, they're going to reevaluate that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm good with six L on that one.
That's tough.
I don't know.
But I'll go with six L on that one.
So we have three to one?
Yeah.
Okay, you're fine with three. Next is four.
Two to two, five S three.
Let them know. Nineteen seventeen, two to two.
Did you capture that, Jay? They've changed their mind.
Oh.
No, one of us has not.
It's two to two.
Two to two is a six L.
Sorry, one, one mind change.
Okay.
Okay, on four twenty-five Geneva Craftsman duplex, this is currently six L.
Okay, this one is kind of heartbreaking. This has been so deeply, my pages have all gotten mixed up.
Four twenty-five Geneva.
Yeah, but that one is really mixed. What page number is that?
Thirty-eight.
Oh, it's right in front of my face. Okay, sorry.
The windows.
We're getting close, though. We're getting very close.
So this is one that you said is heartbreaking?
This is six L currently.
The next one's heartbreaking.
Okay, so six L. Oh, some of the windows have been replaced.
Some windows have been changed. The porch posts, porch columns have been, we don't know. There's definitely something that happened at the porch. There is something weird going on with the projecting bay right over the porch, which isn't typical for the style. But again, weird things happen. We can't say. The second floor is larger than your typical, typical airplane Craftsman. And when you have two-story Craftsman that were built as two stories, they generally have second stories that rise above the volume of the first story, usually. So HRG kind of gave this a six L because of its early date, but they couldn't find any other reason to go higher than that.
I'm okay with six L.
I'm good with six L.
Sadly, yeah.
That's sad. The next one.
The next one is twelve fourteen South Glendale Traditional, I'm sorry, Transitional Craftsman nineteen oh three. It is currently six Z due to alterations.
Yeah, and, and this is, this is just dramatically altered, the.
Enclosed porch, a window at the right.
We, we've asked, we've had a consultant, a different consultant look at this property, and, and the idea was like, is there a story to be told about the conversion of these to multifamily properties? And, and if so, is there a story? They haven't found that story. Someone may be able to. This is very reminiscent of the house at five ten West Doran. It's a current kind of development project that's going to council next week on appeal. It has these Corinthian columns and this similar kind of porch. And I can only assume that those Corinthian columns marched across the left side of the house, and, and they're gone, and. Yeah, that's a tough one.
I have a really hard time.
No, that's just, do you know the history of this house?
Well, let's hear it.
No, we don't.
Well, I can't give you the whole history, but I can tell you, these were the houses when Glendale was first formed, before it was actually Glendale. Coming up Crow Avenue was steam engines, and. Coming up Crow Avenue was steam engines and steam engines ran until nineteen twenty-four. And the women that lived on the street, and this is one of the last houses on Glendale Avenue that's actually a house that hasn't been converted to something else. They got together in nineteen twenty and they petitioned the city council that no more steam engines. So, because what was happening is they're handing out their clothes on the line and they were suit and the whole bit. And Glendale was becoming a progressive city, so the Union Pacific, which was actually the Los Angeles and Salt Lake Railway, well, came in and partnered with the Glendale and Montrose Railway and they bought an electric freight engine, which went along with the fact that Glendale was now a progressive city. And as of nineteen twenty-four, February third nineteen twenty-four, there were no, steam engines were not allowed. This is one of the last houses to actually see that change from a steam Glendale to an electric Glendale. I mean, it's, it's, if you look at railroad history, it's a big mark. In fact, in nineteen fifty-six, Glendale allowed one more steam engine to come in, but they had to take the law that they'd put into effect in nineteen twenty-four that said no more steam engines to allow one more steam engine to run up the thing. And I've sat on this porch many a time, imagining what it was like in nineteen oh-three.
Did you tell them not to enclose the other half of the porch?
Well, no.
Okay, what is our, what's our code on this? We've got to move forward.
Yeah.
I'm fine with six Z.
I mean, that history is great, but I have a hard.
Crazy alterations.
I would hate to see this property go away.
As.
I would hate to see this. This is, this is a huge piece of Glendale history that's.
Right, so.
Learning to love is learning to say goodbye.
No, not on this one, folks. I can do a lot, but this is not one of them.
Six L?
Six L.
Six L? We will recommend that if that is some of your.
Split, please.
What's that?
Split vote, please.
A two-two or three-one?
I'll go with a six L.
That's six.
Six L.
Three-one then.
Three-one.
Okay, next is five twenty-three North Howard. This is currently six L.
And I don't have any notes from HRG on this one.
I can read them. It says, there's some, some degree of detail. The character defending features include fixed front facade windows with multi-light uppers on either side of the door, in the front gable transom, partial silights and original single panel door. They're saying it's high integrity.
I, I think this is one of the ones that because it's in the later twenties period, they couldn't make the determination that architecturally. And just so you under, so you guys know, most of the twenties craftsmen are being identified under criterion one rather than criterion three.
Sorry?
Because they can't find the architecture to be significant, so they're trying to make the determination under criterion one, which is.
Broad and generous.
And, and so they, I think they have been careful in applying that as they look at these.
I would agree. Six L seems appropriate.
Is there any?
Anyone else?
No, I would go with five S three. I mean, I just was at this property today, checking all the windows again. People saying, why are you at our house?
Okay, but not, okay, I'm not advocating.
I know.
But you're saying it's the.
So split vote of?
Five S three.
Yeah, it's a high integrity, clipped colonial craftsman.
Okay, next is one thirty-one West Maple.
Oh.
Has six, currently six L.
Work fast. This house is being.
It's from nineteen fourteen. Alterations include steps, porch posts and.
Here it is, right here.
Yeah.
HRG is calling this a six L because of the porch, because of the cheek walls at the porch and under the front window. But also, what's not noted here is the brackets. There are brackets on the roof line that have been filled in basically, so they're kind of solid triangular volumes.
I think six L is actually quite generous.
Oh, I think that's not a. Yeah, I've just, stylistically, I can't even fathom that that would not be, that can't be original.
Okay, this house today, as of this picture right here, they're tearing the interior out, as of today.
As they can of every five S three that you designate, so.
You can call it.
So vote on this one?
Six L.
You guys fine? Six L?
Sadly, yes.
Okay, the page forty-two, two hundred to two oh-six West Maple Craftsman Duplex. This has affiliation with Charles Shattuck Architect. This is currently six L.
The architect affiliation is interesting but not meaningful unless we know more about Shattuck. I know he's identified in the historic context as an early Glendale architect. Now we know he's not related, or he didn't do.
To Charlie.
Yeah, to the other Charles Shattuck. But HRG is going to revisit the Sanborn and try to understand this property. They are pretty sure that this originally was a U-shaped property that was infilled and they, you see the little, this little line here. They're, they're pretty sure that this line does not indicate that this was a wall and they're very familiar with the Sanborn codes more so than I am. So they're going to look at this again. Their concerns were that things look funny here with this, this porch, but I'm, I, I think this one's interesting and worth looking at more closely, so.
Okay, so reevaluate?
So they'll reevaluate.
Sounds good. Okay, next is twelve thirty-eight South Maryland. This is six L due to alterations.
You know, I have to say that this.
Second story addition at the rear.
Maryland, Such a Cool Street.
Yeah, I don't, is it second story addition at the rear?
No, it's a separate building.
Separate unit at the rear, yeah.
Separate unit. It's also enclosed porch at the right.
Yeah, there's an enclosed porch on the right, but, but if you look, this house is super funky. It has a hip roof on one side and a gable roof on the other. I wonder if this was originally a smaller house with, with just two side gables and then this hip, this whole side might be an addition. So HRG is concerned about it. They're going to revisit this one to kind of think about it a little more. And H, and this is, yeah, this is TGHS has five S three, so we'll revisit.
Okay. The next page is five twenty-four Pioneer. This is currently six L. Clipped Colonial Craftsman nineteen twenty-two.
And again, this is in their methodology, they couldn't make a finding that this jumped up to that level.
I would agree on that one.
I'll have to go with six L. I didn't get to see this one yet, so I haven't checked the windows and everything else, so.
No, the windows look intact and.
They're just thinking it's not that amazing.
And I can't emphasize enough, in an intact older house, we could have, we could have an old craftsman that's a hundred percent intact and it still might not be a five. Just, that's, that's kind of how survey works.
Because you guys remember the conversations that we have when something comes to us for a Glendale Register property, like at that level and the amount of conversations we have about and don't agree at that level. So making sure that even as we're classifying them now, we would really think they would rise to a level of a Glendale Register.
We're already having legal challenges to properties identified in the survey. So the more we can have every five be something that at all times, not only me, but successors in the future who are looking at the survey, will be able to say, yeah, that's a five for these reasons. That's really, really important and so, you know, and that shouldn't change your views, but we'll.
Yeah.
Are we six L here or split?
Sorry, Jay, you said we're already having legal challenges?
Which I can't talk about really, but we're.
He already did.
There are people who know what's in this, in this preliminary survey. We're challenging this survey. I don't know what's going to happen as this moves through the review process. Los Angeles is finding, they're having problems with their citywide survey.
Individual owners or developers?
Yeah, he can't say, but we can only speculate.
Yeah, it's just happening. I'm sharing that with you. That shouldn't change your views, but I, what I want to do is reemphasize how important it is that fives be fives and be very defensible, so.
Okay, the next one is four four-four West Broadway Craftsman nineteen thirteen. This is currently six L.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I, I'm fine with six L.
Yeah, and obviously you can ignore Ani on this one.
And after this, I haven't seen.
And, and the.
I'll go with a six L. I can't do a five S three without seeing it.
Unaltered buildings are not automatically historic.
And that is our last one. Other than any other comments in general on the survey or additions that we, that you found on your own that you want to bring forward?
No, I think Commissioner Doom had some, but he's no longer with us.
No, I don't. Okay, anybody else?
No, I have some, but I've got to check them against the list to see if they're not already on there.
Oh, that's fine. You'll have time to do that and we'll have another conversation in January. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone today or any other comments. Do you have something?
And no, nothing for other at this time.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, so that concludes seven, I'm sorry, six A. We're now moving to eight. Planning division updates and informational briefings. We have A, an update on recent city council decisions regarding.
Oh, yeah.
Regarding Glendale Register nominations.
Okay, quick update on recent council actions. I think most of you are familiar with some of these decisions. Oops, we're in the wrong show here. Council has taken a different tack than they have in the ten years that I've been here on a few recent properties. We've spoken in-house with the Historical Society at regular meetings that we have. We've already taken some steps to address some of these issues, but ultimately council is the final arbiter. So if members of the commission or the community are unhappy with some of these decisions, the ultimate, the ultimate thing to do is to approach council members individually and talk to them about concerns that we have at staff level. We can, you know, focus on things differently. We can, we can draw attention to things, but we also can't ignore things. And the things I'm talking about are alterations. So we'll first look at the Bruce, or I'm sorry, at the Whitney House. This is the Oregonist Lauren Whitney's house that you reviewed a while ago. This was brought to council. Council looked at it, felt it was appropriate for Glendale Register listing and the Mills Act. So now we have this very interesting house eligible under criteria two and three. And now we begin the part of our journey that is less, less pleasing, which is, this, this house on Vista Del Mar, proposed as the steward house, was denied by the council. The initial discussion focused on the wall at the front of the house, which is not original, which the applicant said she would replace or remove because it's technically, it's illegal to have a wall there even with the significant six-foot drop-off from the sidewalk to the front yard. But then there were a few small alterations made over the years, some of which staff, as well as the commission, felt were appropriate and well done. And council kind of focused on those and then turned it into something that snowballed a little. Their primary concern had been the front wall and then it morphed from there. I can't explain exactly what the res, what their reasoning was. What we're going to try to do in the future at staff level based on this is kind of address alterations, but really make sure that when we think they're appropriate, to explain why we think they're appropriate. And that will help you in your deliberation. That'll be in the staff report that goes to the commission and then to council also. We're also going to, but we also don't want to, you know, we're going to show every alteration because that's one of the main things that we bring to you when you, when you're saying, is this eligible? Just like we've been discussing for the last few hours, how, how many alterations can something sustain before it's not eligible anymore? I, I kind of question that this house is hard to photograph, may not show as well in photographs as it does when you experience it personally. There's been discussion from the community about council visiting these sites. We're in no position to make that happen, but if they were lobbied to do that, it could raise the issue for them. And, and then also, I'll, I'll, in the future, try to, you know, I've already done this at these hearings, but maybe preempt that by the discussion of alterations in the, in the staff report. And then it was also raised in our quarterly meeting with TGHS that there, there's some concern that in the last few years, we've been grouping Glendale Register nominations as they go to council and it may just be too much and get a little overwhelming or make, make a change here and a change there look like, wait, all these properties have been changed. I totally appreciate that. We're going to do our best to bring them soon closer to the time that they're heard by HPC. The last few years have just made that really hard to just schedule these meetings. But, but we hear that concern and we're going to do our best to kind of not group them as, as badly as we do. But sometimes we even group them coming to you. So if you have two hearings, two, two items in a hearing, we will bring those two to council. We're not going to split those up. So this house went through that kind of process. The other one that happened a couple of months ago was ten fifty-one West Mountain. This is the house that was pretty intact except for the twenty-seven replacement windows. And council became concerned about those twenty-seven windows and the extent of the alterations. They questioned whether, you know, the Mills Act, you know, is that why we're giving someone the Mills Act? So they have, I think they have a variety of issues on this subject and they, I'm not sure ultimately how to, how to counteract that. This house, even at staff level, when we brought this to you, we kind of, were kind of a little bit on the fence because of those alterations. Because when we're putting twenty-one, twenty-seven, I'm sorry, new, brand-new windows in a historic house, that's a big percentage of the windows and most of our houses have a much higher percentage of, of original windows. But, so this, this one was a little more complicated, I would say, than the previous one. And then last year, this is, I don't know what happened to that slide. Last year, this is the Art Baker House that was also denied by council. This one also was kind of a little more understandable because the property had been through so many deep alterations. And we also had the association with Art Baker and council couldn't get its head around his significance, although HPC didn't have too much trouble. I'm not sure. There's no, there's no prescribed level of fame you need to have for associative value and I think this guy just didn't make it in their, in their minds. So.
He's on TV now.
So if you have any thoughts or comments of how, how to revise or think about staff reports or anything else, I'd appreciate that. And, and I don't know if we have comment cards for the site.
No.
Oh.
Yeah.
Where are you going to go?
No.
So I think, I think at some level, there was just a certain level of misunderstanding about, I don't know why, at this hearing where some of these were denied, about how the Mills Act is supposed to work. Council seemed to be a little confused, especially with the property that has the fence in front. And so again, I don't know how to better convey the purpose of the Mills Act. I think when council members suggested that they just give it designation without the Mills Act and ask the wall to be torn down or.
That was, that was mentioned but didn't get any traction.
No, no, I know, but the point of the Mills Act is to provide, you know, some type of financial incentive for the owner to.
Although this very commission once did that same recommendation, but it didn't go anywhere. I, I don't recommend it. I think if, if we think something's eligible for the register, we don't have other criteria for the Mills Act unless something changes, so we should, I, I would always fight to make sure that those are tied together. But ultimately, it is two votes and they can vote on them differently, so.
Right, and I also felt like there was some confusion that maybe, I think we as commissioners tend to look pretty carefully at all of the permits. But I think maybe, you know, a lot of the permits that go with our packets have to do with, you know, plumbing or interior fixtures or whatnot.
We try to pull those out unless we don't have time to do that.
When you send it to council?
For, no, for you. We, we try to pull out all the mechanical plumbing permits because they're not germane to the exterior of the building generally. Sometimes we haven't just because we don't have time to go through it or we forget, but.
Well, maybe I'm mistaken. I didn't relook at the packet for that particular house, but I just felt there was sort of this flipping through of the permits and saying there were too many changes when there really weren't that many alterations.
Oh, yeah, for, for the, for the mountain house, there, there was, I think, confusion. There had been a deck built at the back. The deck was removed and I think that may have added some confusion.
I think for the house prior to that, and Majestic, is it, or?
The wall.
Or Vista.
The wall house?
Or even, even beyond the wall, there.
This house definitely had, there was some issue with, with some work in the backyard that we didn't have a concern about. But that point is also well-taken because over, in the past, we have pulled those, we haven't given council those permits. Our direction over the years has been council is, doesn't need the full amount. You guys being the experts need all of that information. Council's relying on your judgment, so we don't need to give them a packet this thick. I'm going to now start erring on the side of giving them more materials just so they have it. I can't say they're going to go through the permit history, but it'll be there.
Well, no, I, was, was your point more just they were flipping through page after page of permits that were irrelevant to actual architectural changes or exterior facade changes and then just writing it off, saying that there was too many changes just because they saw twenty pages.
They don't give them anything superfluous, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think council got all those permits. We tried over the years for you. For HPC, we pull out the plumbing and the water heater and the garbage disposal. and the garbage disposal and whatever else.
Although I don't recall there being that many alterations at the Vista Del Mar property, so that there was at least one.
No, no, the permit history is pretty clean on that.
Right.
And you, and, and then a question came up, did you get a permit for the work on one of the windows, which I believe a permit hadn't been pulled for that, which is not great either. So, one other thing that we can do is when we see these alterations, you know, we presume if we see an altered window, it doesn't matter if they got a permit because you're going to ask them to put a new window in, which will get a permit. I, I guess we may have to start, you know, questioning people a little more and checking, checking that history.
Right.
So.
Is it possible to give council, I mean, we presume that they watch our commission meetings with perfect excitement every weekend. They know exactly what we're doing, but.
We do.
Yeah, I'm sure they're on this one.
But, I, I mean, my concern after that meeting, not because they said anything, but because of the breadth of the, the five houses that they had to do that one time and all of that. I, I, I think it's important that they understand, and I know you, you've mentioned this to them before, but maybe there's some kind of report, report that can be given to them about the properties that we actually turn away, that we're not rubber-stamping everything, and that we put a lot of careful thought into these nominations and that they're not taken lightly. If they want us to do the heavy lifting, it would be nice if they did an equal amount of heavy lifting or if they had a concern about something to maybe have a bit more question about it. I get that they shouldn't rubber stamp our work either, but at some point, there were a lot of no's to things that I think, I personally think should not have been no's.
Well, and even more the properties that we don't even get to see, that get turned away at the staff level before, you know, we.
Yeah, I don't want them to think we're just rubber-stamping.
All I can say is that there's no mechanism for staff to deliver that report, but I do think there's a mechanism through your individual appointments with council members to give a, where you could work with me, we, we do keep track of all of the denials. We do keep all of the files that we receive. When we get a nomination that we say we can't support this, sometimes we get that as a nomination, someone's invested the money in the nomination, and, and they decide to withdraw it when we're just so negative about it. More, more often, I just get a call and someone's, I look at Google Street View, and I'll say, "Oh, maybe you should send me some more photos so I can see everything," and I'll just say, "Looks," and I don't track those. And I, I have shared with council that that happens a lot more than anything that you guys ever see.
Yeah, I bet.
And then what you approve is a lot more than what you see. So they, they know, we've told them that there's this kind of vetting process. Individually, you might wanna, especially if you think certain council members may benefit from learning about how, how this commission works, that might be an opportunity for either you or for the advocacy groups in town to, to kind of raise that. Which I'm not saying we're not going to do, but I just, there's no mechanism for a report about that. We have to wait to be asked to do a report, so.
Okay. This is a totally kind of an aside, but I am curious, and I probably should know this. If someone's application is denied, even as, as far as council, do they get their application fee back?
Yeah.
They do?
Their Mills Act fee.
Their Mills Act.
There's no application fee, but they get a full refund for the Mills Act.
The Mills Act, okay.
Well, the, the idea is we, we want the Glendale Register to not have a fee, and all of the upfront work is about the register. After, after council approves it, that's when we draft the contract, go through the contract, and then are responsible for the ongoing server, ongoing monitoring, so.
So if they get denied, they refunded the, the fee they paid?
Yeah.
Right, because they do pay a fee upfront?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We cash the check and got it, and they, and then you just reimburse it.
Right, got it.
Okay.
Thank you for that update.
Sure.
Well, if we have any ideas about better educating or ways to bring that forward to them, I mean, we'll let you know.
Yeah, that'd be great, and Commissioner's comment section. Okay, we've covered a lot tonight.
Other updates?
I, that was everything.
Okay, well, thank you all, and thank you everyone here for all your work.
We beat our last meeting.
We will adjourn the meeting, it is eight twenty-nine.
You want to adjourn in memory of?
Oh, yes.
Adjourn in memory of.
Oh, yes, adjourn in memory of December seventh, nineteen forty-one.
That's right. Thank you all.
Glendale.
Thank you.
Thank you.